Welcome, everybody. We'll call the meeting to order tonight.
For May 21st, 2019. Forgive us for starting a little bit late. We got caught up in some stuff in closed session. But can I have a roll call, please?
Mayor Harris.
Here.
Vice Mayor Cardoza.
Present.
Councilmember Boomgarden.
Here.
Councilmember Espandola.
Here.
Councilmember Shaw.
Here.
All right. Mr. City Attorney, do we have anything to report from closed session?
I have nothing to report on at this time, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you. This time, we're going to have an invocation by Pastor Greg Mansour. Thank you, Greg, for coming. Really appreciate it. And once Mr. Mansour is done, I'm going to ask soon-to-be-retired Police Commander Tom Tappy to lead us in our Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you, Tom.
Shall we pray? Gracious Heavenly Father, thank you so much for the opportunity to be here tonight. We thank you so much for this community that we call home. We are so blessed to be a part of this community, and we thank you for all who make it up. Lord, thank you for these council members. Father, thank you for their service to our community. I pray that you'd bless them and watch over them, watch over their families, give them wisdom as they undertake the business of the city tonight. Lord, we just ask your protection and care upon our first responders, our police, our fire, EMTs, our schools. Lord, there are so many blessings that you have brought our way, and we just continue to look to you for the wonderful things that you have in store for us, not just for this day, but for the future. Thank you for the Lord Jesus Christ. Thank you for the gift of salvation. We ask your blessing upon this meeting tonight, for it's in Jesus' name that we pray. Amen.
Amen.
(Pleading) To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you. Just for information, item number 23, the Sutter County Board of Supervisors' use of the council chambers has been requested by staff to be pulled from tonight's agenda. It will be presented for discussion at a future meeting. So for number one, we have presentations and proclamations. The first one is Older Americans' Month Proclamation. We have Senior Commissioners Tony Curlin out there. Tony, if you can come up, and then Tana Thomas also for the presentation. All right, for today, first of all, welcome, Tana and Tony. The proclamation is recognizing that May is Older Americans' Month. Nearly 21,000 residents of Yuba City and the surrounding area are now 60 years of age or older, even more of us if you go by how we feel, representing 21% of total population. Yuba City recognizes the importance of bringing together all generations and engaging in activities that promote physical, mental, and emotional well-being for the benefit of all. And our local communities can enhance the lives of older Americans by promoting home and community-based services that support independent living, involving older adults in community planning events, and other activities providing opportunities for older adults to work, volunteer, learn, lead, and mentor. So now, therefore be it resolved that I, Sean Harris, Mayor of the City of Yuba City, on behalf of the entire City Council, does hereby proclaim May 2019 to be Older Americans' Month. We urge every resident to take time during this month to recognize older adults and the people who serve them as essential and valuable members of our community. Thank you. All right. Well, thank you very much. Congratulations. Next is Moms Matter Mental Health. There's Michelle out there. Where is she? There she is. Michelle is from Sutter County Children's and Families First. There you go. Long time no see. You trying to dance with me again?
Not tonight.
All right. So May is the month of maternal mental health awareness. Over 1,285 babies are born in the Sutter County area each year. Between 10% and 20% of new and expectant mothers are affected by perinatal depression and related mood disorders such as anxiety and psychosis, and they may experience associated symptoms which are often overlooked and heavily stigmatized because new and expectant mothers suffering from a perinatal mood disorder often feel confused, ashamed, and isolated. Many at-risk women may not seek help because they are not informed about perinatal depression and related mood disorders. Heightened awareness and increased education among all residents in the City of Yuba City regarding the incidence of prenatal depression is critical. Prenatal depression is highly treatable with therapeutic interventions such as medication, professional therapy and counseling, support groups and community support services, including the Blue Shift Project and crisis hotlines. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Sean Harris, Mayor of the City of Yuba City, on behalf of the entire City Council, does hereby proclaim May 2019 as Maternal Mental Health Month in the City of Yuba City. We call upon all citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, and businesses to facilitate increased awareness and education about perinatal depression and related mood disorders throughout the City of Yuba City, to explore and encourage the use of prenatal screening tools, and to improve the availability and access to effective treatment, prevention, and support services for the promotion of maternal and infant mental health in the City of Yuba City. Thank you. All right. And there you go.
Thank you, Sean.
You're welcome.
Amen.
And I'll say congratulations. All right. Public Dispatchers' Recognition Proclamation. See, we have some honorees coming forward, please. We have Public Safety Dispatchers: Deidra. Oh, man, I always try to check names first. Geddis? Is that true? All right. Erica Campos, Misty Widener, Shandra Stubblefield. Shandra Stubblefield. And Communications Coordinator, Tanya Smallwood. Here they come. So when you all dial 911, these are the ones, these are the folks on the other end.
Put two of your girls. It doesn't matter.
Welcome. They're the ones on the other end. I tell you what, they have a very stressful job. Not a lot of people out there can do it and do it successfully. So you're looking at five real heroes right here in front of you, and there's more where they come from, too. So I really, really appreciate what you guys do. Am I speaking this loud enough? So let's see. National Public Safety Telecommunications Week, which is April 14 through 2019, so we're a little late. But these individuals are responsible for responding to the telephone calls of the general public for police-fired emergency medical assistance and for dispatching said assistance to help save the lives and property of our citizens. Yuba City Public Safety Dispatcher's service and dedication to duty has resulted in countless lives saved, no doubt about that, injuries minimized, and property damage reduced. Public Safety Dispatchers are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services. Each dispatcher has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during their performance on the job in the past year. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Sean Harris, Mayor of the City of Yuba City, on behalf of the entire City Council and citizens we serve, do hereby recognize and honor the men and women whose diligence and professionalism keep our city and citizens safe. Well done. Thank you very much. Thank you all very much. Did you ever say anything? No?
Picture.
Oh, picture. I'm happy to say we're going to run out of room up here. So for National Police Week, everyone in uniform and whoever else wants to join, come on down here, please, so we can recognize you.
Yep, right there. You gotta look good. Do your best, huh?
We've got one spot here.
We've got one spot. Come on, we've got one spot.
Yes, yes, come on, right here, right here, right here.
Hey, come on, you have to represent the world, come on.
All right, you guys are all looking really sharp. We're happy to have you here today. We're happy to honor you. May 15th was designated as Peace Officers Memorial Day, an annual observance to honor the nation's fallen law enforcement officers and men and women of courage, judgment, and dedication. The calendar week in which it falls has been designated as National Police Week, a time of reflection and appreciation for the ultimate sacrifices made by the exceptionally dedicated men and women of law enforcement who were killed or disabled in the line of duty. It is important that all citizens understand the challenges, duties, and responsibilities of their police department, and that the members of our police department recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence or disorder. The City of Yuba City is grateful for the day-to-day heroism of our officers, both past and present, as well as their families who have given so much of their lives and service to our community. Very true. Now, therefore be it resolved that I, Sean Harris, Mayor of the City of Yuba City, on behalf of the entire City Council and the citizens we serve, do hereby recognize and honor the men and women whose diligence and professionalism keep our city and citizens safe. Further, the City Council of the City of Yuba City wishes to honor all the police officers who, through their courageous deeds, have lost their lives or have become disabled in the performance of duty. May we always remember their tremendous sacrifice and the loved ones they left behind. We also have a gift for wherever Chief chooses to hang it, in the PD, along with this certificate here. Very well said. Thank you, Dave. And here you are. You can hit the hold it. All right. Picture time. Thank you very much. Appreciate it, Jeremy. Thank you for coming over.
Thank you.
All right, brother. Take care. Be safe out there.
Sure.
And thank you for that nonsense, too. Full day of recognition. It's always a good stuff. You can do whatever you want. So I don't know who all is here from the list that I have, but if you are here, please come down. And if you're not, don't worry about it. And if you're, anyway, yeah, following Public Works employees, please come forward. Ben Moody, Tom Bybee, Tony Hettleston, Sean Nelson, Eddie Ramirez, Jose Valero, David Hernandez, Brian Davis, Tim Warley, Robert McDaniel, Gary Cooper, Shane Whittig, Jason Benzel, Dave Collander, and Jesus Celestino. What's that?
Hey, I thought our police guy was there.
I've got you. I've got you.
Thank you. All right. Welcome, you guys. So it's our honor to be here, to recognize you. For Public Works Week, which is May 19 through 25 of 2019, the American Public Works Association established the National Public Works Week in 1960 to recognize, educate, and celebrate the role of public works in the community. The 2019 theme of "It Starts Here" honors the contributions of public work services are the building blocks of civilization, creating and maintaining the vital infrastructure of our city. It's a tough job. Each individual Public Works employee plays an essential part in the function of the Yuba City Public Works Department. No single person can match the combined strength and ability of the unified department, for none of us are as strong as all of us. Now, therefore be it resolved that I, Sean Harris, Mayor of the City of Yuba City, and on behalf of the entire City Council of the City of Yuba City, do hereby proclaim the week of May 19 through 25, 2019, as Public Works Week, and ask that citizens and civic organizations alike acquaint themselves with the issues involving in providing our public work services and recognize the contributions that the men and women of Public Works make in our daily lives. Ain't that the truth. You guys, you gotta do a lot of hard work out there. Kind of an unsung hero as well. So we really appreciate everything you do, and thank you for being here. It's our pleasure to recognize you this week. All right. Very good. Thank you very much.
Mayor, before we go to the Youth Commission presentation, can we please get a picture of council with, for the Older America's Month proclamation? We missed a picture opportunity.
Hi, my name is Kelsey Myers. I'm the Youth Commission's liaison, and I'm really proud to introduce this group of amazing young people. They've accomplished a lot this year, and they're here to present on those accomplishments for you guys tonight. So I'm going to pass it off to Erin, who's going to start it off for us, and we'll see what they accomplish this year.
So first, we have introductions. First, we have John Crager, Joanna Jarvis, Nick Morris, Lilly Patrick, Genevieve Hagan, myself, Erin Ramirez, Sean Sandu, Samir Gupta, Isabel Smith, and Matt Beggins. So we have our mission statement. The City of Yuba City Youth Commission acts as an advisory body to the City Council and/or involves city departments on all youth-related issues. Commissioners give voice to the concerns and needs of youth in the City of Yuba City and provide great leadership in the community. So what we've been up to, we've done ribbon cutting, summer stroll, concerts, and movies in the park, the Fourth of July Parade, food truck event, Harvest Festival, Christmas Stroll, bathroom stall paintings, the teen pool tournament, volunteering, and our special Olympics basketball tournament. Now I'll pass it off to Lilly to tell you more about the ribbon cutting.
One of the first events we got to take part in this year was the selection of the colors and the equipment going in at Southside Park. We were also there for the ribbon cutting, where we got to see all the smiling faces of the young kids that got to play on the equipment for the first time. We were also at the Summer Stroll, where we stayed at the Yuba City tent and promoted the Youth Commission. We had fun games for kids to play, and we also had a cutout wave for people to take pictures. That was a huge hit. I'll leave it to John and Jen.
This year at the Concerts in the Park, the Youth Commission served hot dogs and meals to the community while we enjoyed some good music at Gauche Aquatic Park. We all had a great time, and we learned how to cook hot dogs.
This past summer, the Youth Commission took over the Movies in the Park. We started off by handing out Lays for Moana, and we followed up with movie selections of Guardians of the Galaxy and the original Jumanji. We also participated in the Fourth of July Parade, one of the community's largest events. I acted as the Statue of Liberty, and John acted as Uncle Sam, and the rest of the Youth Commissioners helped out handing out food and just helped at the event. We had a lot of fun. We plan on participating this year as well.
The Youth Commission was happy to host our second annual food truck event at San Brandon Park. Thousands of people showed up to enjoy good food, music, and lots of fun. We hosted our very popular cornhole tournament again. We will be hosting our third food truck event on July 21st from 11 to 4. We hope to see you all there. And next, we will have Nick presenting the Harvest Festival.
This year, we also partook in the Harvest Festival, an annual event we do for the younger children. There were many booths with games and prizes for them. And while they were playing the games and prizes, we were collecting cans to donate to a nearby food pantry. Next is Sean Sandu.
The annual Christmas stroll on Pluma Street has become one of Yuba Sutter's most popular community events, and this year, Youth Commission joined in to help out with this event. We helped run the Yuba City booth, which provided information about what the City of Yuba City has to offer from, from, excuse me, from youth sports to jobs. We handed out candy, candy canes, and we also helped with the lighting of the Christmas tree as well. Along with this, we also had a few fun games and activities. We also, we also, along with this, we also had a few fun games and activities as well, one of which was the photo booth, as showcased here by Matt and I, just for anybody to come and take some funny pictures and have some fun. And then we also had another lollipop ring toss game. It was off towards the side in that picture right over there. It was an extremely difficult game, but it was still extremely fun. Overall, the Christmas stroll had a great turnout this year, and I'm really looking forward to next year's. And now, Isabel.
So I'm a senior this year, and I decided to create a senior project with the Youth Commission and the local Special Olympics program. With the help of Kelsey, TJ, the Director of Special Olympics, and the Youth Commission, we were able to put on a fun preseason basketball tournament for the Special Olympic participants. In addition to a fun, feel-good tournament, we raised over $4,000, with all proceeds going to the Special Olympics. The event was a complete success, and I'm very proud of the outcome. And I'm also very excited to see my fellow Youth Commissioners carry on this event for the many years to come. Now here's Joanna with Bathroom Stalls.
So early on this year, we came across some images online of a middle school where teachers had painted murals with inspirational quotes and art on the outsides of bathroom stalls to help inspire students. And we decided that this was a project that we wanted to take on as the Youth Commission. So we partnered with the River Valley High School Art Club, and they helped us to design and execute the painting. We were able to paint bathroom stalls at the Yuba Sutter Play Stadium and at Franklin School. And we hope that the murals will inspire and uplift local students and kids in the community. And now, here's
After a while of planning, we finally held our first-ever teen pool tournament. We had eight teams show up. It was a decent turnout, and everyone had fun. The team that won received prizes and trophies, so they were very happy with that. Next is Matt Beggins in regards to volunteering.
Even though the Youth Commission had many successful volunteering events this year, we wanted to highlight three: Clothes for Kids, the Touch Truck Event, and Earth Day Event. Clothes for Kids was an amazing volunteering event. We had many volunteers, not only from the Youth Commission, but from the community as well, come out and support the event. Volunteers took kids into the local coals and pick out clothing necessities they needed for school. This included shoes, socks, pants, shorts, sweatshirts, shirts, anything the kids really needed to start the school year off right. The Touch Truck Event was also an amazing event. Many trucks from a variety of different jobs and backgrounds came out, so kids could interact with them and kind of get a feel for what they're like. The Youth Commission was there to kind of keep everything in order and keep everything moving efficiently. The Earth Day Event was kind of the icing on the cake this year. We had 30 volunteers come out early on the Earth, early Earth Day morning, for three to four hours, and pick up garbage and other things lying around. We also painted the bridge with some graffiti on it. It was also, this was just a very good volunteering event. We had, yeah. Thank you guys so much for this opportunity, for doing this. And we had, like I said, we had many volunteering events, but these were the three we highlighted for this. Yeah,
So that concludes the Youth Commission's 2018-2019 year. We'd like to extend warm thanks to the City Council for giving us this opportunity to, you know, foster growth and volunteer in our community. All of us here in the Youth Commission, we hold leadership positions in our high school, you know, in different clubs where we also participate in service. And it's, I'm even more special to be a part of the Youth Commission because we're able to reach a wider demographic. Personally, for me, my goal is to, you know, make as much of a positive impact on others as wide as I can, as many people as I can. So I'm really grateful for that opportunity, and there's a lot of new things that are going to be coming up next year that we're really excited about. If you'd like to keep track with us, then you can follow us on our Instagram page at @YubaCity. So, thank you, and please, next slide. Any questions?
From the council. I just want to comment and congratulate all of you and the entire commission for the work you guys do. You're very conspicuous and present out there in the community. And I know you know this, but you really, really make a positive impact on our community. We wouldn't be the same without you and your efforts. And I think it's wonderful, and very proud of everything you do, very proud of our city when I see you out there doing your thing. And it's just amazing, and we really, really appreciate it. So looking forward to seeing you at the next event. I think it might be the food truck, the third one coming up, Summer Stroll, and then the food truck, and I saw you at the pool tournament. But there's always something, and you're active, and you're smiling, and you're getting out there, and you're setting a positive example for other kids your age, or maybe some that aren't quite old enough to be involved in the level you are now. So it's a win-win stuff. And I got to tell you, I really like those opportunities, and you're a shining example of one of them. So thank you very much. Thank you. But there's more. We have four honorees tonight that are on the Youth Commission. I'm going to start, we're going to do one at a time, because we get a photo op with you. And then we're going to do a group photo. So Joanna Jarvis, come on down. Let's just do a group. Just do Joanna Jarvis, Isabel Smith, Genevieve Hagan, and Samir Gupta. Joanna has three years served, Isabel has two, Genevieve has four, and Samir has three. She just looks young. Take that as a compliment. I'll be squeezing right here if I may. Where's your bag, Manny? Take a few seconds and let the room clear and leaving all the diehards behind. Where are my? Here we go. All right, so we'll go on to number six, bid opening for a resurfacing project. Ben, welcome.
All right, thank you. Good evening, Mayor Harrison, members of the city council. So the item before you is in regards to awarding the 2019 resurfacing project. Does that work? I got that, yeah. So, so back in April, April 16th, city council approved the plans and specifications for the, there we go, for the 2019 project. It's a resurfacing project that basically puts rubber cape seals with a, with a slurry seal cap on it. Basically 10 streets, three predominant areas throughout the city, approximately 50,000 square yards. And so in April, after approval of the plan specs and authorization to bid the project, we put it out to bid. We opened bids May 7th and received two bids. The two bids unfortunately came in pretty high. And so we were, we talked to the contractor a little bit, looked at options. They're about $110,000 over the, over the bid. If you look at a base bid versus the base bid with the alternate. And so in order to stay within the budget for the CIP residential resurfacing and the funding program for residential resurfacing, I want to take out that $110,000 worth of scope and add that to a future project we'll have for an ADA improvement project. And that would allow us to use different funding sources for those ADA ramps. And so with the bids being, we looked at, we talked to the contractors, the big, even with an inflation of 15% last year, we're still sitting way below what their markup was for this year. But looking at those numbers and the separation between the two bids with one at 870 and 650, I don't believe if I go out to bid, we're going to get a better number. We're going to basically come in with a number that probably floats in between 870 and 650. And it's not really going to be advantageous for us. So with that, I recommend let's pull the ADA ramp scope out of it to bring it within the original $550,000 budget. And it was what we were shooting for and then move forward with that project. And so, so the breakout, here's a little screenshot of basically what I'm proposing to do is to eliminate ADA ramps throughout the area. And then we're going to reduce the, some of the rubber chip seal scope. And then that would bring a number, looking at a project total closer to 587 if we maxed out all the contingency and construction management. Proposing to use accounts, residential road rehabilitation account for 150,000 and 438,000 at the road rehab account approved in the CIP budget. So with that, I recommend approving items A through C. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I'm good. No comment. We can entertain a motion.
Through the mayor.
Yep.
I'd like to make staff's recommendation of the 2019 resurface project award contract of recommendation A, B, and C.
I second.
I have a first and a second. All of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Ben.
Thanks.
Appreciate it. Number seven, Yuba City Economic Development Commission Ordinance Amendment. Welcome, Terrell.
Good evening, mayor and council. So tonight, we're having the second reading of, or I'd like you to waive the second reading, of the adoption of the Economic Development Commission Amendment. It's kind of going slow tonight. So again, as a recap for anybody who wasn't here at the last meeting, the Economic Development Commission was established by ordinance in 2008 and it provides oversight of the economic development work plan and strategy. And currently, we have five members representing diverse businesses and industry. And for example, education, agricultural, small business, medical, and real estate. That isn't limited to those positions. That's just an example. So the action requested is to increase from five members to seven members, and which makes the quorum increase from three to four members. And it was also requested to have monthly meetings in the evening. So the ordinance doesn't need to adopt when meetings are being held. So that can be established through the bylaws or the procedures of the Economic Development Commission when it gets started. So tonight, what I'm asking is, and here's a list of our current members. So tonight, what I'm asking is to adopt ordinance, and I had that backwards, 00119, amending sections 2.1201 and 2-1205 of chapter 12 of Title II of the United, over the Yuba City Municipal Code Economic Development Commission, increasing the position, the composition of members from five to seven, and waiving the first reading. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right. No questions?
Questions?
Anybody from the public care to comment? Sir, do you have something?
Through the mayor. Mr. Mayor.
Yep.
We have a lot of people in attendance tonight. Maybe you would share, because you asked for this, of what the reasoning behind this was. I know there's no economic, physical impact to this, but the purpose of going from five to seven.
To, we have a lot of things coming from the Economic Development Commission that we're tasked with. And it became, I don't want to say devolved, but it became to where we wanted to see more from them. All of us ran on the somewhat of a platform of economic development. And the commission exists to be an advisory board for us. And so I wanted to add some more diversity to the, to the panel, increase the, the membership, bring, have them have their, their meetings in here, appoint a former chairperson, and provide probably a little bit more oversight and guidance and direction and expectations to them to actually produce something that's going to develop or help develop our economy. Not that they haven't before, but I think there's probably some untapped resources and some ideas and, and folks out there that can contribute significantly to our economy. And I want to give them the opportunity to do that.
Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome. Anybody have any else comment? All right. And that will entertain a motion.
Through the mayor, adopt, may I make a motion to adopt ordinance number 01-19, amending sections 2-12.01 and 2-12.05 of chapter 12, title II of the Yuba City Municipal Code Economic Development Commission, and increasing the composition of members from five to seven, and waiving the second reading.
I'll second.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? None. Thank you very much, Terrell. Appreciate it. At this point, we're going to move on to a public hearing for a Research and Prevention Tobacco Tax Act enforcement grant to include identification of problematic retailers, ordinance, compliance, inspections, educational training, and shoulder tap operations. So I'll open the public hearing right now. Public hearing for this proposed research in prevention tobacco tax enforcement grant to include identification of these items I just mentioned is now open. If there are any members of the public who would like to address the counsel on the issue, please step up to the podium and state your name, maybe not, maybe your work address.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Harrison, members of the council. My name is Brian Thornton. I'm a sergeant with Yuba City Police Department. I'm here speaking on behalf of the police department in regards to a grant application that we applied for in October 2018. The grant is focused on targeting underage tobacco use, both in retail establishments throughout the city and those that would choose to put tobacco in the hands of minors within the city. After applying for the grant, we received award notification that we were subject to receiving the allocation of the money in the amount of $53,895. The grant runs in accordance with fiscal years 18, 19 through 2021 and would require us to reapply for future allotment of money. The request and recommendation is that we create a, or utilize an already existing finance account to accept funding in order for us to use that money to accomplish the goal of targeting the underage tobacco use through education enforcement, both with our youth within the city, the schools, and at the establishments throughout the city. Do you have any questions?
Through the mayor.
Yes.
One of the questions I had on this particular grant is to know if you're planning on partnering, partnering with Sutter County Tobacco Control and Health on some of these initiatives because they receive additional funding as well. And they're doing some sort of the same type of initiatives that listed on this particular grant.
I know to this date, there have not been any discussions in regards with partnering with Sutter County, but always it's the determination of the police department within the city that we're more than happy and willing to work with other local agencies and government in order to meet both common goals. So I would be speaking partly off of my own opinion and based off of conversations with the chief of police that if we're afforded the opportunity, yes, we'd be happy to work with Sutter County, but there's been nothing discussed as of yet.
Yeah, they have a committee, Sutter County Healthy and Safe Communities or something to that effect. And it's part of a tobacco initiative that they have, which is in the community and part of it also in the schools. So as you're looking at, I was just reading through the combat of the operations of underage tobacco smoking, are you also looking at electronic devices?
Yes, ma'am. It's consisting of anything tobacco related to include what's commonly referred to as vaping, or your common use cigarettes, cigars, things of that nature. It's our hope and our goal to work with the cadet program within the police department and help educate at the schools, utilizing our cadet advisors, and then also utilize the volunteers throughout the cadet program to assist us in both educating, but also conducting enforcement under the supervision of law enforcement.
So you'll be looking at the specific vaping stores and other of those types of local retailers?
Yes, ma'am. We've identified 17 tobacco retailers and three vape retailers within the city.
Okay. My final question is on, will you be reviewing the, it looks, it states here, ordinance, compliance, and inspections. Would you be willing to then provide us the specific ordinances that you'll be looking at within the city? So we have a understanding if, if we're in line with those ordinances, or do we need to relook at them as a city council? You know, I'd like to have your feedback and input on that. That would be helpful.
Yes, ma'am. If, if you would like us to assess the ordinances and based on the information we obtained while doing the enforcement and identifying the different retail establishments, if we identify that there need to be adjustments to the ordinances, it's something we can absolutely provide you.
Yes, I would really appreciate that. Thank you and congratulations for getting this grant. We're seeing so many vaping issues within the school systems that it's really becoming truthful, an epidemic that needs to be, I think, given a lot more attention to. So thank you for doing what you're doing in the community for that. Great job.
Sergeant Thornton, did you, did you write the grant request?
I did not write the grant request. That was completed by Sergeant Michelle Brazil.
Okay. Are you the one that's going to be implementing it?
Yes, sir. I'll be implementing, supervising, and providing all of the reporting back to the federal government and back to the city in regards to the ordinance requests.
I just wanted to applaud the police department for seeking this alternative method of funding to accomplish something so important as Councilwoman Espendola talked about. So thank you.
Through the mayor. First of all, we all know that it's an epidemic that is getting out of control, especially with the flavored tobacco products and stuff in the vaping industry now. Do we know how this grant could possibly be impacted? The state's looking already at banning flavored vapes because of kids and the packaging and stuff. Sacramento just banned the vaping as well, effective January 1. If the state was to take that action, do we know if this grant money would disappear or still be here for the next three years? Do we have any information on that?
We've been afforded the money through fiscal year 2021, as long as we accept it. And it is for the purposes of research and based on the taxes associated with tobacco. So it's research that we're going to be providing back to the state in order for them to make the determination to discuss what you're relaying. So I don't foresee it being removed because they are requesting us to conduct the research on their behalf in order to make a sound decision, which is also why we're going to have to reapply for it if we want future funding after the end of that fiscal year.
Okay. Thank you. And thank you for everything you guys are doing.
Anything else?
I have a follow-up, one more question. So you're developing a plan as of the result of this money to then potentially apply for further funding, right? Is that what you just stated?
It's first and foremost to identify the problem areas within the city.
Okay.
And deal with those issues as they, we find them. Secondly, we're going to report back to the state with our findings. But then we'll make an assessment to determine whether or not and how it is we're going to proceed from there with future grant proposals or requests. At this point, I can't attest or answer to what our intentions are going to be after year 2021 until after we've had an opportunity to go through the, the process.
Well, I'm happy to hear that you're planning for possible other future funding and potential other interventions that could be brought to the city and to our community. So thank you. Thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am.
Through the mayor, just one final question I failed to ask. When do you have to reapply? Because you said you have to reapply. So is that annually coming up every fall? Or when do we have to reapply?
No, sir. We would reply at the end of the 2021 fiscal year.
All right. Thank you.
Good. All right. So anybody from the public care to comment on the issue? It's been kind of a hybridized public hearing where we had staff presentation embedded in the middle of the public hearing. So we will fix that right now. Seeing no comment, we'll go ahead and close that and come back to council for action.
I motion to adopt a resolution authorizing the chief of police to accept $53,895 in grant funding for, from the Research and Prevention Tobacco Tax Act of 2016 through the California Department of Justice, and approve expenditures recommendation associated with identifying and deterring violations involving underage tobacco use and/or sale. Shorter next time. Whew. And A, B, excuse me, authorize supplemental proportions in the amount of $53,895 to revenue account is 100-43-160. Federal law enforcement grant into the division of 2187 for travel, trainings, and supplies. Is that it?
It's easier to just say an ABC.
Maybe I'd like to read.
I'll second it.
I have a first and a second to approve staff's recommendation. All those in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Unanimous vote. Thank you very much, Sergeant.
Thank you, Mayor Harrison, and the rest of the council.
Thank you.
All right. So now we'll move on to public communication. You are all welcome and encouraged to participate in the meeting. Public comment is taken on items listed on the agenda when they are called. Public comment on items not listed on the agenda will be heard at this time. Comments on controversial items may be limited and large groups are encouraged to select representatives to express the opinions of the group. We have no written requests for public communication. Is there anybody who did not submit a written request or like to say anything? Anything? All right. Moving on to consent calendar. All matters listed on the consent calendar are considered to be routine and can be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time that council votes on the motion unless members of the city council, staff, or public request specific items to be discussed or removed from the consent calendar for individual action. We do have a request from council to remove item 14, and it has been removed from the consent calendar for individual discussion. consent calendar for individual discussion. And do we have anybody else who wants to remove anything else? Nothing? All right. So here and now, we'll take a motion on items 11 through 13 and items 15 through 18.
Through the mayor.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar items 11 through 13 and 15 through 18.
All right.
I second.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
And opposed, none? Thank you very much. Moving on, and we'll go ahead and discuss number 14. Mr. Gale, you're up. Welcome.
Evening, Mayor Harris, city council members. This evening, the item before you is to, we currently have a purchase order with Dennis Cook, who's our former development services director. The city's purchasing requirements, anything over $50,000 requires the approval of the city council. We are coming to the end of his current purchase order, which is at $47,500, and we're asking for an increase of an additional $40,000 from, from existing budget savings from, from salary savings within the development services budget. We have found for the past five years, Dennis has done a variety of work for the city and continues to assist us on a variety of projects. One such project is the Boge Stewart Master Plan, which if we had to go out and get another person to, to help us and assist us with that project would probably cost us $5,000 to $10,000 just to review the documents before they would begin even working on the project. Hence, that's one of the projects and one of the reasons why we'd like to continue working with, with Mr. Cook. Additionally, Mr. Cook helped actually write the El Margarita Master Plan. Although not adopted by the city council, we do have projects within the El Margarita Master Plan that continue to move forward, and he can provide us some expertise. He also wrote our zoning code, so when we do have concerns and questions, he's able to really get back to us quickly. I've called on a couple of, of issues where we've asked for some outside consultants' help, and they've quoted me a couple thousand dollars, and Mr. Cook quotes us a couple hours at the most. And so it's, it's really beneficial and physically prudent for the city to continue using the services of, of Mr. Cook. He's also helping us with the central city specific plan update on the Feather River Mill project. And, you know, really what it comes down to is all these projects we could get to, but it takes time. And with the use of outside consultants, it really helps us, you know, really keep to a timeframe that we can get to the developers and have, have some, some surety of these projects moving forward. And that's the reason why we are requesting the increase from the current of 47,500 to a total of 84, sorry, 87,500 for Mr. Cook.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Gale, just a quick update on the accessory dwelling unit ordinance. Any idea when, when we might have something that, that the, the public can actually begin to apply and construct?
Yeah, absolutely. So we're, we're going in two phases. First is, right now, what we found is the biggest issue is related to fees and how you charge impact fees. So we helped bring that back within 30 days to the city council, which will do with the fees. There are other issues in the zoning code which could negatively impact a person's ability to do an accessory dwelling unit, but takes much, much longer, related to setbacks and a variety of other planning requirements. But as people have been coming forward right now, the major issue is in our zoning code, it states if you're putting in a new kitchen, it triggers the city having a requirement for them to pay AB 1600 impact fees and new connection, water and sewer connection fees. We hope to have that in the June city council meeting.
Thanks for the update. Maybe for the audience benefit, just a quick, since you can probably do it better than I, just a quick explanation of what an accessory dwelling unit is and what that might mean for the city's housing issues.
Yes, so an accessory dwelling unit is the opportunity for someone to, on an existing parcel where there's already a single family home, to build an, an additional unit. Back in the day, they used to call these granny flats, and there's been a variety of different state laws that have, that have been passed that are kind of helping build those. And when we're not seeing much development in our community, anything we can do to try to create additional rooms for people to live in, for whatever circumstances they might be in, an accessory dwelling unit is what it's, what it's called by law, will hopefully help us increase some new housing starts.
Through the mayor. Mr. Gale, following up on Councilmember Bougainville, he's talking about that, but you also brought up the, the fact of the impact fees. We had that some time back, and it was an apples and oranges comparison, and I know we've had discussions that the anticipation was we would have that by May. What I just heard is within the next 30 days. Can I get a date certain so the council knows when we can really address this? Because that's really what's holding up all the economic development in this area is impact fees. Because I'll be honest with you, if I'm a developer and I know the council's considering it, I'm not pulling a permit, I'm not doing anything till I know what's happening. So can you give us a definitive date that we can have that on our agenda?
So there's about 13, I think, different jurisdictions that we request to get information from. Unfortunately, if I could get a definitive answer from a local jurisdiction on what the fees were, I could give you an answer. I've received information just today for some of the jurisdictions, and if you would like, I could bring that back as quickly as the next council meeting with what I currently have. It is not all of the jurisdictions that the council members requested information on, but I can definitely bring what I, what I currently have. I can have that at the next council meeting. Because I asked the consultant that's helping him with us, developments, developments, finance associates, who actually do this for developers, are the ones that we helped, that, that we brought on to collect all that data. So if, if that's the council's direction, I will bring it back at the next city council meeting, and I'll, I'll bring to you all the information that I have today. And, you know, it's not all of the information requested, but it's at least what I, what I have today.
I appreciate that. I really think that we need all the information, and I realize there are things out of your control, and it's, it's been a couple of months. Mr. Mayor, am I, and Mr. Gale, am I stepping out of bounds to ask for it by the second meeting in June so we can have that conversation finally? That's 30 days.
I think you can ask for anything. It depends on, is that possible, Darren? Is that reasonable?
As long as we can get the information from the jurisdictions. We, unfortunately, as we're looking to these apples to oranges, it's, it's more than just asking what your AB 1600 fee study, we have to, the consultant has to dive down into development agreements and a variety of different information from the projects. My goal is, and as I've told the consultant, is, you know, your guys are chomping on my heels, and we have developers that want to build and that they're holding off until the council has this opportunity to look, to look at the fees. Like I said, I can bring something, and I can write up a staff report and have it prepared so that if I can get the information prior to the next council meeting, it'll be on the next council one. And, you know, like I said, I'll have everything ready to go except just the attachment that shows what all of the jurisdictional fees are. But like I said, I'm councilmember, I have about half that information. There's just still a few jurisdictions that have, have not gone back.
Thank you, Mr. Gale. I, Mr. Mayor, I would like to see that discussed by at least the second regularly scheduled council meeting in June. Let's get this thing done.
So we have that request that we realize some of that stuff's out of your control. I think an update regardless would be, would be nice by then. You can only do with what you have if it's not in your control. So I, it's clear you understand the urgency on this. We really want to get it done.
Yeah.
And you're doing the best you can. So thank you very much.
Through the mayor. Yeah. I, yeah, I support what you're saying, Mayor Harris. I think that an update would be a good sufficient to look by June, and I'd rather have a really complete report. And I, I know that you've been working really hard with our consultants, so I would say keep pressing forward with that and bring it to us as an update and just keep us abreast of it. So just keep doing that. Thank you.
At a minimum, what I'll do is I will make sure that by the end of this week, you have a memo with the information that I currently have.
So through the mayor. So just for Mr. Gale's benefits here, saying whether he has six or 13, as long as he brings this, we're, we're good with it. If only six jurisdictions is only answered out of 13.
Right. If he's lucky enough to have the information back that he's requesting by then, that's, so be it. But if not, I think an update, just a status check would be appropriate and definitely of interest to all of us.
Okay.
So thank you very much.
And it will, also, Councilmember Shaw, when we bring it to city council, you will then have to give us direction to come back to the next meeting. So even if we don't have all the full information, at least it would give you a spectrum, an idea of where some of these other jurisdictions are. And then no doubt, by the time that, that it was finalized and that you brought back an ordinance for adoption, all the information would be there. So what I hear is obviously prior, at least by the second meeting in June, I'm going to try to have it on your first meeting in June with the information that we have, and then you can give us direction, and who knows, maybe we can even have it in that follow, following city council meeting. Thank you.
Very good. And just for point of clarification, Darren, you're probably already doing this, but when we say development impact fees, different jurisdictions put different fees under that umbrella, what they call impact fees. If we could just get, in the interest of having apples to apples, regardless of what they call it, regardless of what we call it, what are the fees to open a door?
That's what.
Yeah. I think you're probably already doing that.
What we're pulling is everything from school districts.
Perfect.
To paying a permit to actually, you know, get a permit for the home and, and having, not break down by every specific name, but at least, you know, hey, here's what's a processing fee is, here's what's, here was what your impact fees are, and here are what connection fees are in those jurisdictions. And then also other types of conditions of approval that are offsite improvements that are required of the project.
I have one, one question here.
An almost. Are we, are we also taking a look at CFTs?
I, I have not looked at CFTs.
But do you think it would be appropriate to do so in connection with the, the development costs?
So a CFD is what's called a community facilities district. We do have some, some information when the city council adopted the CFD that I could provide to the city council, which showed, I think, a few jurisdictions of their tax burden on, on homes. So when you're asking about that, are you looking for all local governments financing districts on properties or just specifically the city council adopted a $425 community facilities district for services? Would you like us to provide information on all of the community or all the financing type districts?
The, the concern that, that was raised at the meeting that we had with the builders and developers in April was the impact on the buyer of not only the development impact fees, but the ongoing taxes and how that impacts their ability to turn a profit on the building itself. So for me, I, I think, you know, again, not trying to overburden the study, I think at some point, we're going to need to take a look at the community facilities district costs as well, because that is factoring into the developer's decision on whether they go ahead with a project.
Correct. And, and councilmember, I do not believe that the city council has set a standard on what the, the total tax burden should be on a home when it's sold. So the state, your, your property tax is 1%. Then you have school bonds, community college bonds, levy district bonds. Some jurisdictions actually say, you know what? It's not going to be above 1.8 is kind of the, a threshold that a lot of jurisdictions have. And we have some taxing districts, entities within the city's limits that are over 1.8 right now. I just found that out recently, and they have no CFD on their property.
So Mayor, I need to.
I answer your question.
I need a point of clarification. So are, is council asking Development Services to review the CFDs and the additional costs that are put on properties on an ongoing basis? Because that scope of work is much different than what the current consultant is doing. And when you're talking apples to apples, that's a, that's a really difficult comparison because agencies do a lot of different things.
I'm not asking for that. I was at, for that to occur. I was asking if it was coming with the other information, but I do think it's something that we're going to have to address going forward because the builders and developers have, have asked about that.
Okay. Thank you.
And so then, did you have any other questions, Mayor?
Well, just, it's true that there's, it's possible for the, someone to develop something when they have no CFD. Is that true?
So any new projects that are coming forward in the city today?
New project.
We have 12, 12 growth policies, and when those projects come through for a map, one of the conditions that's placed on the map is that they're required to annex into our community, community facilities district for, for services. There are other things like landscape and maintenance districts also on, on top of that. But this is the first time that the city has adopted a community facilities district, and that was part of the 12, 12 growth policies that were adopted about 14 or 15 years ago by the city council. We've only had a few maps that have come in since that was adopted. The only project that is currently built that is having to pay the new CFD is the new project on the north side of town called Valencia Estates off of Elmer. And that, that's, that's the current project that's, there's a few other projects that have it as part of a condition on their map. Sutter Heritage on the corner of Smith and Walton, the Faith Christian Project, the.
Mr. Mayor, I don't mean to interrupt, but at this point, we're getting a little too far outside the scope of the agendized item. And so in light of the Brown Act, I think we need to refocus back on the agendized item.
Appreciate that. Are you clear as to the request?
Yes.
Okay. And are you good with the, okay, perfect. Then we will go ahead and move on.
Could I ask for action on the item before?
Move on, move on to take a request for action. Yes.
Well, first, we would open it for public comment and, and then proceed to action by council.
Anybody willing to carry a comment from the public? No? All right. Entertaining motion?
I motion authorize the city manager to amend the existing professional services agreement between the city of Yuba City and Dennis Cook of Yuba City to increase the contract amount for, from $47,500 to $87,500, subject to approval as a legal form by the city attorney over there, and with the finding that it's the best interest of the city.
Well, yeah, we were way off, weren't we? Talking about.
Too much for asking a question.
Yeah. Thank you for that. All right. I have a motion. We have a second.
I'll second.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
No one opposed? Very good. Thank you very much. Wherever you already sat down. All right. Well, my thing here says Ben, but hold on.
I'm anxious.
Says Brad on this.
Hold on.
19.
So we're on 15 now?
19. 19. That was consent calendar. Up to 18.
My bad.
Here up to 19, sir.
I can't even blame it on not having my glasses on. All right. Number 19, Brad, Urban Forest.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Brad McIntyre, Community Services Director. Before we get to the requests, I'd like to just have a, do a couple of quick introductions. Matt Langley is our parks manager, who is part of the grant that was received, and I'll talk about that here in a second. And in the back, I've got Robert Condry, who is our parks supervisor and also our arborist as it relates to the requests that would come before you. So as council is aware of, in 2018, we came before you asking to apply for a grant through the Department of Forestry, and it was called a CAL FIRE grant. In September of 2018, we were awarded approximately $370,000. The background of this, we must, can have the funds spent by March of 2022. And as you can see, the funds for the grant, we used for those items. I'd like to draw your attention to the plant and irrigate 500 trees within the city. Currently, we have roughly 12,000 trees, so this is pretty, almost an additional 50%. And the second thing I'd like to draw your attention to is the, the development of an urban forest management plan. Really, an urban forest management plan is really, it's an action plan. It's a, it's the roadway to how to maintain our trees, keep them healthy, inventory them, track them. And so that is why we are asking help in a contract for Davie Resource Group. Also, I'm sorry, I was negligent. In the back here, we have a representative from the Davie Resource Group, Emily Spilett. She will be the lead project manager of it as well. So the scope of the work as it relates to this contract, those items are right there. Again, probably all of it's very important. It, the, I would say for our trees that have been neglected in the past as related to just the conditions of climate and staffing, this will certainly help us, get us back on track. The group that we're asking you to consider a contract with, they have a great resume. They have the experience, a regional experience. They are clearly in our neck of the woods, and in addition, they are used to their grant requirements, which will help us for reporting back to the grant. Staff's recommendation, as we mentioned, their experience with the other cities, their proven quality work, and their overall expertise. I'm not going to read that, if that's okay. Just going to. Just going to reinforce that is the request. And I gladly entertain any questions at this time.
None? Any member of the public here to comment on our urban forests? Seeing none, we'll entertain a motion.
Susan, Mayor? I'd like to make a motion on your urban forest management plan. Staff's recommendation of Action A and B.
Have a second?
I'll second.
Sorry.
All those in favor?
Aye.
No one opposed? No one. Thank you very much. Thanks, Brad. All right. Spencer's here to give us a presentation of our investment report, the quarter ending March 31st of 2019. Thank you, Spencer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to ask that Brad McIntyre return the audiovisual equipment to the--
Your request is noted and approved.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Harris, members of the council. Tonight, I bring before you the treasurer's quarterly investment report for the quarter ending March 31st, 2019. The market value of the third quarter portfolio is $131 million, $131.5 million. $105.5 million is city-held, which does include $9.6 million of Sutter Butte Flood Control Agency funds and $26 million of trustee-held funds, various bond issues. We had an $18.8 million net increase from last quarter, and the notable transactions are on the screen, including payroll, flood control, construction costs on levies, Fifth Street Bridge reimbursement claim receipts, sales tax receipts, and the first property tax allocation received of just under $10 million. Seven investments matured or sold, and eight were purchased. The average year yield sold 1.57%, and the average yield purchased 2.85%, which is going definitely in the right direction for increased portfolio yield. On the screen is a pie chart of the composition of the portfolio. There is a typo, the gray wedge on the, kind of around 5 o'clock on the pie, should read Camp, which is another alternative to Leif. And it's basically a money market type fund like Leif. So the Camp is part of the cash-like portion of the portfolio, which makes up, Camp makes up about 11% of the cash-like portfolio, which is total about 47% of the entire portfolio. 53% of the portfolio is bonds. Bonds such as corporate bonds, US Treasuries, federal agency bonds like Fannie Mae and Freddie Mac and so on. The maturity distribution reflects a conservative portfolio that favors anticipated flat or slightly declining interest rates and modest to no economic growth in the coming quarters, as well as large construction-related cash flows, mostly from the flood control, construction, and the Fifth Street Bridge projects. Try to keep it short and sweet.
Quick.
Do you have any questions?
Nothing? Anybody from the public here to comment? All right. And we'll note, and I think that's a note and file.
Thank you.
So Darren's back up on consideration of the 2019 and 2020 CDBG funding applicants.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers, once again. So this evening, I'm here to speak about community development block grant funding. I actually have the same presentation that I gave last time. I see that we have a lot of new folks inside the audience. So Mayor, if you don't mind, I'll go through that. I do want to mention, we do have our department analyst, Jaspreet, that's here with us, who is our CDBG specialist, who's been with the city now for about six months, I believe. And she's been a great addition and has learned the community development block grant funding well. I also want to mention that for many years, the funding that was, that the council considered for CDBG came before the council on the last night that you could actually approve it and actually be able to qualify for funding. So this is the first time in many, many years since I've been at the city that there's been actually two council meetings now where the council members have the opportunity of discussing where these CDBG funds will go. And based upon the last council meeting, I have some additional information for you. So first, just a little background. The city of Yuba City is what is called an entitlement jurisdiction. And we receive a federal formula grant from the US Department of Housing and Urban Development, which we call HUD. And the ten of the program is really to provide decent housing, a suitable living environment, and to expand economic development or economic opportunities primarily for low and moderate income persons. And this upcoming program year, we are-- the federal government has announced that we would receive $647,714. So what is the process that the city follows? First, we send notices to all past and what we hope to be our future sub recipients. And it's been kind of nice with our Yuba Sutter Homeless Consortium. We actually stole a few of their emails or borrowed them and sent out information even to more service providers in the region. We held a public workshop on February 6, 2019, to discuss this year's CDBG funding. One of the goals that the City Council has mentioned is homeless and helping fund a homeless shelter. And we mentioned the importance of that. The applications were due on March 13th. And those applications were reviewed, rated, and ranked on March 18th. That was made up of staff members from Development Services, Finance, and Administration. And they make the recommendation that's before you. The next process is to finalize the action plan. And we have a 30-day public notice prior to the council's consideration of finalizing this funding. So as we go through CDBG, there's a certain percentage of funds that can be used for a different type of uses. First is administration, which is the staff time that it takes to prepare the annual action plan. And also every five years, which this coming year is the start of our-- or it's the end of our fifth year, which we are required to do a five-year consolidated plan for CDBG. So the recommendation is to allocate a full 20% for that, which is $130,000. The second is only 15% can be set aside for public services. The Sutter Yuba Homeless Consortium was the only organization to submit an application. And they have a few other sub recipients of theirs. As we talked about at the last council meeting, staff is recommending that half of this be set aside just in case Sutter County opens up a homeless shelter anywhere. But they're talking about it at Live Oak Boulevard. If for some reason, it's determined that they're not going to do that this year, and they inform us that, all the money would then go to the Sutter Yuba Homeless Consortium for funding. Also, in addition, if prior to the end of the calendar year, so by the end of December of 2019, if they have not had a facility up and running or ready to go, all this funding would go to the Sutter Yuba Homeless Consortium, how they requested. Whereas right now, it's being recommended half of it be set aside for a shelter. Additionally, I will note, this is, I won't say off topic, but there are funds coming through SB2 funding from the state as it relates to providing housing to the homeless. The city will be receiving $245,854.45. That money, we do not know when it'll come, but it says anywhere between the winter of 2019 and 2020. So that funding might not come in, and they can adjust those dates. So the notice of funding availability is going to come out in August. However, when we might receive those funds, we do not know. And again, that's one of the reasons why we're-- why the recommendation was to set aside half the funds. Again, it is the council's prerogative of how you'd like to allocate those funds. The second is for our, for projects. And we have two different types of projects. One's public facilities, and the second one is housing projects. So first, and this is where some of the discussion from our last council meeting. First was a recommendation for Freed for $15,000. This is a home repair program for disabled that they've done annually. They do an amazing job. This is everything from installing, you know, an ADA toilet or an accessible tub to handrails in some of our seniors and disabled folks' homes. The second one is actually, it's a city of Yuba City program, but is actually managed by the Regional Housing Authority. And that's what we call our owner occupied housing rehabilitation program. We're currently below $100,000. We like to keep that right about $100,000. We're asking for $47,501. And then finally was a request from the Regional Housing Authority, Kingwood Common, for the Kingwoods Common project. And it was recommended to give $60,000. This is where the discussion was mainly at our last council meeting. Do you provide funding or not provide funding to this project of the Housing Authority? We did look into low-mod housing funds to see if they could be used for this. And low-mod housing funds cannot be used for just general maintenance of a building. It can be used for maintenance of a building if they're about ready to lose their 55-year or their 30-year deed-restricted affordable housing covenant. And then finally, for public facilities, there is a request from Public Works and the Parks Department recommending was $200,000 for ADA sidewalks and $100,000 for the Sam Brannon Playground replacement. If the City Council would like to fund these fully, to do the 210 for ADA improvements and the $160,000 for Sam Brannon Playground replacement, the staff would recommend reducing the owner occupied housing program by $10,000 and the Regional Housing Authority by the $60,000, if that was the direction of the City Council, and fully fund the two requests by the city. At this time, I can answer any questions of the City Council. I know that we have a variety of recipients that are here. At the last council meeting, it was requested that we inform all of our applicants about this council meeting. And I see that we have a few of them here.
Any comments?
Through the mayor, Mr. Gale, on the $97,500, which half was going to go towards the Sutter Yuba Homeless Consortium. And then there was a time certain. And if the homeless shelter wasn't put in-- let me rephrase this. If the homeless shelter isn't constructed, then all the money goes to the Sutter Yuba Homeless Consortium. And it appeared, or it sounded like there was a deadline.
Correct. So it would have to be-- something would have to be done by the end of this calendar year, by the end of December of 2019.
Is that imposed by us? Or is that imposed by some regulation?
So this was staff's recommendation, because if we don't spend the funds as placed in our action plan, then there's a possibility that we could lose funds for the following year. We believe that with six months, that would obviously provide the Yuba Sutter Homeless Consortium plenty of time to expend those dollars. Also, it's my understanding that the county is obviously working on this homeless shelter and that they, their goal is to have it up and running by the end of summer, is what they're saying. And I know that the City Council and Board of Supervisors will be having a joint meeting. But that date can really move, council member. It was staff recommendation. I don't, I wouldn't recommend going too much farther past that, because I think someone would have a difficult time expending the funds in a timely manner.
That was going to be my question. If they missed it by a month or something, just because of unforeseen circumstances, do we have the latitude to hold on to that and provide that funding for the homeless shelter? That's all.
Yes, we do. And also, hopefully by that time, we'll have an understanding of when the SB2 funds will be coming to the city. But today, we really don't, other than HUD has said late winter of 2019 or early 2020. Thanks.
And Matt's?
So there's two parts in this where you're asking us if the additional funding for-- can you go into, I think it is the next slide? Or previous slide? Thank you.
Yep, there you go.
So if we were to fund the public facility improvements, we would need to reduce $60,000 of the Regional Housing Authority, is that what you're saying?
So the question last time was not funding the Kingwood Common Roofing and fully funding the city request.
Okay. Now, back to the homeless consortium. To reduce it half, because that's what's mainly what's being done, is the $97,000, right? Reducing half, that would reduce the half of the services currently provided by the individuals that are trying to reduce the homeless issue. So how-- is there an impact? Is there going to be an impact on those services based on reducing it by half?
Yes, there would be an impact on those services.
And have you received any information from the group itself to say what potential impact would be by deciding to reduce it half for now? Or could we, if we were to receive the SB2 funds, utilize some of those funds for the shelter?
You can. So the question is, is we just don't know when those funds will be coming? You could also use general fund dollars if you wanted to pay for the operations of the facility. I know there's a lot of funding out there for the actual construction and building of the facility. However, the operational side is the difficult side. And in the past, the City Council has said, hey, let's use CDBG funds for that. But this is really, the council gets to make this determination. Based upon the information we received, we thought what we were providing at least gave some time to be able to determine if there would be a homeless shelter built in Yuba City and if there would be needs for operations for it. We would also, we would send those monies through the homeless consortium either way. So half the dollars are being set aside. But the assumption is, is that we would give it to the homeless consortium, and then they would give it to, I believe, the discussion is with the Salvation Army, possibly running the temporary homeless shelter on Live Oak Boulevard.
Correct, correct. So then, if that, without even knowing when they're going to break ground, it's just, I think it's really-- it's really us trying to forecast, you know, the breaking ground, development, and then operations. Because this, that's almost the last part of it, correct, to this whole process, sheltering?
Yes.
So it could, in theory, I'm just-- it could be sometime next year when operations, because the building has to occur first. So in theory, the building probably wouldn't be ready sometime in 2020.
Yeah, according to my conversations with Neil over at Sutter County, who's their Director of Development Services and Public Works, he says that as soon as he gets the okay, he'll be going down to Home Depot, hopefully to purchase a tough shed, like they've done in Yuba County, or possibly purchasing tents. Didn't sound like it was going to be a permanent structure that they're proposing. But you are correct, we do not know. It's pure speculation at this time.
So the operations of the services would be in some sort of trailer? Are they planning to bring in a trailer, park it, and that's their operation services?
At this time, I do not know. But these are good questions that I can make sure that when the joint City Council Board of Supervisors meeting is, we could ask the county to maybe give us some insight of what they're proposing.
Yeah, that would be helpful, to know how they're planning to do their actual operations services, because we're not-- and knowing the current providers, they're doing services now. There's no needing to gear up to get it going. They're doing it now. So I kind of feel like it's, we have other monies potentially come in. We could possibly fund that $50,000, whatever, to the operations of the shelter. Because I think we can contribute, but maybe not through these particular funds.
Once we have a definitive answer from the state on our SB2 funds, we'll be back for the City Council to get direction on where you'd like those dollars spent.
Thank you.
Dan, Mayor?
Yes.
But that won't be till August, correct?
So the notice of funding availability is supposed to be posted August. And then they said award will be late 20, or winter of 2019 or 2020. My assumption is it'll be 2020, based upon some of the other funding that's come down for these type of projects. And again, this just gives you a variety of options to be able to choose from. However, we do need-- However, we do need to know tonight so that we can finalize that action plan and be back before you in a month to be able to secure our federal CDBG funds.
So what's in front of us? This is the amount requested and what staff's recommending?
Correct. And then you can make any changes you'd like to.
Okay, through the mayor. Mr. Gale, I'll own up to it, I'm the one that started this whole conversation last time. Going through the budgetary process that we've begun, I think the mayor and myself have a really big understanding that there is a ton of needs in this community and there is only so much money. When I look at this, I'm looking at ways to impact the most people, get our biggest bang for our buck. But yet we've got projects that we have to, to take care of. You know, go down to your next slide, please, when you talk about Kingwood. Going through the reports, this has been an ongoing problem. They have fixed, Gus, correct me, I believe this is building eight of nine or nine of nine, eight of nine. Okay, I appreciate it. I met with Gus and we've had a great conversation. I've got a pretty good understanding of their needs. It's not something that crept up on us. So back to, we can't use the money referred to earlier, but is there another pool of money that is restricted and can only be used for these types of projects that we can pull from to take care of that need of $60,000? That's my first question. Do you want these sequentially or do you want to tackle them one at a time? Because I have about a half a dozen.
So let me answer each one so I don't forget. Not to my knowledge.
Okay. So basically, we're looking at-
Of city funds. Your, your question, correct?
Yeah, money that we have in our coffers that we could give RHA to help with the 60,000.
Other than your general fund, no.
Okay, let's go down to the next slide, please. The idea that I had and the, the idea I put forward was taking care of our playground equipment first. Funding the full 160 at San Brannon, because if you're going to do something, you need to do it right. And we have multiple buildings over the Kingwood, but when you look at the multiplier of how many people use San Brannon Park, we get more bang for our buck and affect more people by taking care of San Brannon Park than we do Kingwood. So to me, the playground equipment is a priority. And I know that, Mr. McIntyre, we've had conversations that we need to make sure we have, you know, ADA compliant assistance. Right now, we have one ADA compliant swing set down at Gap. And it'd be nice to have them throughout the city so that we are ADA friendly to handicap kids in the area. I did never ask for the full funding for the sidewalks. And, and the proposal you sent us went up to fully fund the 210 and was pulling some other things. Mine was simply take the 60 from Kingwood, give it to San Brannon and do that flip flop. Is there any other sources that we can pull funds to take care of our ADA that, you know, would be earmarked for that? I know that we pulled the ramps off of the project earlier. What other sources of funds do we have to possibly take care of that? I want to get to the end of taking care of Kingwood if we can. We've got residents there that need a safe roof for their head. But I have a lot of people that use the park and we have a lot of ADA ramps. So what other sources do we have if we were to take the 60 from the ADA here and move it over to San Brannon? Do they have another avenue to, to pull in an extra 70,000 from somewhere else? And that may be a question for Mr. Moody or, or city manager.
Yeah, I can address that. We have road funds through gas tax. We also have TDA funds. So, you know, recognizing we have limited resources, we have more resources than are available through this program. So we could deduct the money from the ADA sidewalk project and put that towards, to allow this money to be put towards San Brannon.
Okay. To me, that would be more doable because we're taking care of a need and spending time with, with Gus and talking to him. I understand that, like I said before, he inherited a mess and he's fixing it. And they're going to be solvent as, if I can have at liberty what I told Gus when we met, I really don't want to see you in 12 months in front of me asking to fix another roof because they need to get financially sound. And they're working on it. So at the council's pleasure, I would like to fully fund that playground equipment and take care of our children in this community and reach into another coffer and pull 70,000 out to take care of our ADA sidewalks. That would be my recommendation.
All right, that sounds like a motion and we're not quite there yet, so hold that for a second. Anybody from the public would like to comment? Yes, Kaya.
Hi, my name's Kaya Galicia. I am a board member for the Sutter Yuba Homeless Consortium and the secretary for that organization. On behalf of the board, I want to say thank you for your contributions throughout the many years to support the consortium. And in the last couple of years, you, the council has shown faith in our, in our agency to, to kind of funnel the homeless services dollars through the agency so that we could coordinate and deduplicate and prioritize services for our homeless folks. The consortium has, some of our consortium members have participated with the By County Homeless Services Group to develop a strategic plan to address homelessness. And that plan included three priorities: prevention, development of additional shelter beds and permanent housing, and creating safe and informed communities. In our point in time count that was done earlier this year, 512 people were identified as sleeping outdoors. So the additional shelter beds are necessary. And as has been mentioned already, the operational dollars are limited. And so one of the things that we're, we're hoping that the council will, will do is, is find, not just your council jurisdictionally, will find some support to, to, to funnel some more funding for shelter beds and, and the development of permanent housing as well. So that's what I wanted to say. So thank you again for your support and hopefully there will be, there will be creative ways to find resources to fund all of the, the shelter beds that are being developed and have been in, in operation for, for years and years. So thank you.
Thank you, Kaya. Anybody else in the public? Very good.
Hello. My name is Anna Ogrin and I work at Freed. I wanted to take this opportunity simply to thank you for the funding that you've provided for the, the home modification program. It is a big need in the community and we are honored to continue to meet that need. I also would like to address this ADA sidewalk need. I understand that you have some other funding to provide those ADA accessibility and I'm glad to hear that because that is also very important. So thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else? John, you, you talking or? Okay.
Good evening, council, mayor. John Nicoletti, 1915 Bolton Way, Marysville. I'm up here with Habitat for Humanity and this, the homeless consortium effort. I just want to mention, the last couple of years, we have been identifying a clear trend of moving our numbers in the right direction for homeless community. And I think through our efforts at the coordinated entry site, we are solving homelessness. 79 people in the last 16 months have been placed in permanent housing. We've never allowed women and children to come into the center because we immediately house them. There's been great job placement and continuing services. It's really a focused effort and it's kind of a reverse paradigm of government services. Government goes to where the people are and fixes them exactly where they're at. We also have an announcement today from the governor wanting to establish a new task force to work with local communities to really bring many more resources. This is that time. This is when it's happening that we've dealt with the tipping point of homelessness and we're actually addressing it and, and meeting it where it's at. We're solving homelessness, but the solution is just not near as big as the problem. And so as soon as we get balanced in that, we're going to see a community that immediately reflects a cleaner, safer environment. And just I really encourage you to not hold back on funding that the consortium can use to really keep its pace where it's at. It's fixing the issue. Thanks.
Thank you. And vice mayor, do you have some comment? You wanted to wait till the end?
I, I'm pretty, I was, I'm pretty, I'm good, thank you.
You good?
I'm good.
Okay.
Yes.
And Darren, were you going to continue or you just available for any more questions?
Available for any questions, but, but you know, I did fail to mention something. With CDBG, it really requires partners, these service providers. And the reporting requirements can be burdensome. And I can just tell you, the folks that are here in the room do just a yeoman's job. You know, the city, I think, was the first jurisdictions to actually provide funding to the Yuba Center Homeless Consortium. And to see where they are today is absolutely amazing. But everyone that's, that's being recommended for funding has been a great partner for many years. And, you know, meeting HUD's requirements for reporting are not easy. And it's because of these folks that provide those information to us on a timely basis that makes it a very easy on, on our staff, too.
Very good.
I do have a question.
Now, we do have a comment by the vice mayor here.
Yeah, hey, John, by any chance, sir? Can you go up to, I got a question for you, sir. Sorry, I should have caught you while you were up there. On the cure for homelessness, which is a challenge every day, the question I have, the comment was made, we're trying to get the most bang for the buck. Do you think that if we gave the full 97,000 to consortium, that we would get more bang for the buck than saving, you know, half and half for the shelter here and for you? Would you think we'd get more bang for the buck given it all? Because it's not just for you, you're passing it out to many groups. We just used one to, to spread the wealth. Do you think we'll get more bang for the buck giving you the full amount and then we could work on the shelter issue, you know, 2020?
So it would be my impression that you'll get full value out of that dollar because they leverage it against other dollars. And they've got a lot of data that they deliver that really reinforces how that is spent and what the results truly are. The, the interesting thing to me to witness at the street level is that you, you run into a couple of homeless guys, I call them the friskies. They're over on Pluma Street, have been for a long time. Tried to respond to some calls to get over there and help them. And I called the usual list of good guys in town, you know, John Flo, Kaya, you know, all of our folks in Sutter County. Everybody knows these guys. We're spending tons of effort, but we're not, we just need to pluck them up and put them in a place. They need housing first. And if we start there, they don't want to cause trouble. They've got pocketfuls of trespassing tickets. It's frustrating for law enforcement, it's frustrating for the fire department. I think that this is a much more affordable approach to fixing a community-wide problem. We're, by not addressing it head on, by not keeping it as funded as we can, we're instead leaving it to the emergency room and the jails to take care of it. And those are the two most expensive places to house people. And so we've just seen a much better trend going the other way. And just one of my favorite stats in this whole business is if folks go through, they have, if it's a drug and alcohol issue, if folks go through the Salvation Army 24-week program, nine out of 10 never return to homelessness. It's a straight up stat that's in your face. If you can't buy that and like that, I don't know what's going to fix it. But I do want to say thank you, Darren. You're absolutely right. The reporting on this one is a juggernaut. It's, it's oftentimes not worth applying because it's too much work. There's no pay that covers all the strings that go into this mess. So thank you HUD, but thanks for mentioning that because that is a perpetual headache and you're being honest, so.
Thank you, John, appreciate it.
Through the mayor, John, please. Mr. Nicoletti, I need both you and Mr. Gale back to the podium. I was trying to catch you, sir. Mr. Gale, the first question is just confirming from this report at the last meeting. Go back to the section with the consortium, please. The, I believe it was the 15%. That's, that's the allotment that we're allowed for that section. That's where they fall, we're getting, we're doing the full 15.
Correct. That's the maximum you can do for public services.
John, you may or may not be the person to, to answer this, but I'll start with you. What we're faced with, and I think the thinking behind this is, you guys are doing a lot of good things. The county is trying to solve things with a shelter and they're going to be looking at the city and they're going to be looking to everyone else to help with this problem. What is the consortium going to do? Have they been approached by the county to contribute as well? Are you going to be contributing? You know, if we earmarked through, is, you know, what are you doing if this homeless shelter goes? Are you going to be a participant and a contributor to this as well?
Absolutely. So what you see in those environments is a model through coordinated entry. And I guess if you want to get back to the future, just take a look at the Life Building Center in Marysville right now. There's 21 different partners in there. You have everything from drug and alcohol reduction to job skills training. We have job temp companies in there. Advenus is doing street nursing. There were two nurses in there this afternoon. CRLA was in there helping people navigate some of their legal issues or even just identifications. The county helps with restoring social security benefits. So people really aren't just sitting around like they're in a Starbucks getting coffee they don't pay for. You know, they're, they're expected to participate and involve and engage and it's measured with those folks. Hands of Hope does a great job. But, but really, I think when you see the benefits of that, we can see how we plus each other, not one person pulls the whole cart. So we, we are absolutely essential partners with, you know, with affordable housing. We're, I mean, housing is the secret sauce to this whole thing. We've got to get people off the street, period.
Right. And, and I appreciate that. And, and trust me, we all want to solve the, the homeless problem. And what we're all seeking is long-term sustainable solutions, not short-term fixes. And I really appreciate that. And I expect you guys to be that involved in a shelter with a central entry point and providing services, but more of what I was concerned with, are you going to be putting monetary, are you going to be giving 100,000 to the shelter or is it just going to be, you're going to be there with services? I'm just trying to get a bearing of what's going. There's only so much money to go around. And they're looking at us and we're trying to give to the homeless and help solve the problem. And I'm just wondering, are you guys giving a big check to the county as well or is it just going to be in kind services?
So it's, it's a, it's sort of a strange loose answer is the best I can give. What I've witnessed is that the answer, and the short answer is yes, but how we do it. So for example, a particular homeless couple don't really abide by the municipal barriers or boundaries where they choose to sleep at night. They just want to be where it's safe, where they don't get beat up, where they don't get their stuff taken. So.
I think our answer is coming right there.
Smart version.
I think she's getting to what I, I mean, I'm looking, the big checks that you can only take to really big banks, you know, with letters this tall. Are you guys going to write a check to the homeless shelter or is it going to be in kind services?
So yes, we will be writing a check to the Sutter County Shelter Project.
And do you have an idea of what your check's going to look like?
So I, I don't have the numbers right in front of me. I know that they're, that they have applied for, what is Heap? It's called Heap. The consortium received 1.2, almost 1.3 million dollars for Heap. And so part of that is going towards the Sutter County Shelter. And then we also received dollars from KECH, the California Emergency Shelter and Housing. And, and they have, the Salvation Army has applied for that money for the shelter operations at Sutter County Shelter. So yes.
No percentage, no guesstimation? I'm, I'm just really looking for a number.
So for operations, for operations, it was 450,000.
Yeah, 450. Okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Oh, we got Joe coming up.
Hello, my name is Joseph Hale with Habitat for Humanity. I did want to piggyback off of some of what was just said. One of the things that we as charities do, we never exactly know what we'll have available because everything is- because everything is grant-based. So what the goal is, is, and this is a typical of our organization, is every time we receive grant funding or community funding, we try to match that or even go further if we can. So if we can generate 25,000, for instance, we partner with City of Yuba City to do a home repair program. We can typically leverage, we'll get 25 through the program we have with the City of Yuba City. We'll leverage that for another 50,000 and then probably even 100,000 in gifts and kind. So we can sometimes even quadruple the amount of money that goes into it if we can receive the funding. Because one of the big parts of doing grants, and this is something we'll probably talk about a little bit later, I know with the Housing Authority, is the more money we can get locally, we can even match it for bigger dollars outside of here. And it makes us far more competitive in our ability to get funding and bring it into the community. Because what, one of the things you mentioned was not having enough money to do all the things that need to be done. And how we can come into that in many ways is if we can get some funding, we can use it to leverage a lot more funding that comes from outside of the community into the community. And I think that can make a real big difference for what we can make happen. So our goal is definitely every time you give us a dollar, if we can turn that into four or $5, that's something we work very hard and diligently to try to do. So I just want to mention that. Thank you.
All right, one more comment.
Looks like there's a lot of subject matter experts in the room. So this is a, this is a question or slash concern that I have, which is, where are we at with actually providing a temporary shelter? So those folks who are camping out, for instance, on, on, down by Peach Bowl, Little League, by the airport, I mean, how far away are we from getting them to some temporary housing so that we can begin to address a concern that our constituents bring to us almost daily?
So Councilmember Boom Garden, as she comes up, I will let you know of a recent conversation that the county called and asked us. They asked us about what would be the requirement for a use permit for that area. My county is not required to follow our local jurisdictional rules, but it was a question that they asked a few weeks ago. We told them what the process would be. They've yet to get back to us if, if they want to do that or not. I think that they were hoping to wait till the joint meeting to have a discussion with the city council at that time.
I apologize in advance because I don't know the answer to your question. And I'm, I'm not sure if anybody is here tonight from Sutter County to be able to answer that question. We, that is, I believe you're speaking specifically about the Sutter County Shelter?
Well, it, we can't do anything as a city. Our, our law enforcement officers cannot move anybody off of public land until we somehow get a temporary shelter in our community. So it is a community problem, and we're a part of that community. And even though I've mentioned the Second Street as an issue, it's something that's throughout, throughout Yuba City. So that's, that's just where my interest is. And like I said, I'm happy to have you guys here as much more knowledgeable than I to hopefully provide me with a little bit of feedback about where we're at with this process. Because as it relates to the, the money for the Sutter Yuba Homeless Consortium and what staff has recommended so that there is some money for the, the temporary shelter, I support that. I support anything that we can do to expedite getting this temporary shelter in our community. I know that's not the whole issue or the whole answer to, to a homeless issue, but it is something that I think we need to get going on as quickly as possible.
Absolutely. So I will say that there's some regional efforts happening. So between Yuba County and Sutter County, Marysville and Yuba City, we're working on some, some ordinances that will be adopted regionally to, to be able to enforce, compassionately enforce some, some, not necessarily no camping, but other, other ways to, to help people, to give people some sort of incentive to get off the street. And by, by providing shelter, then you can enforce the ordinance. And without the shelter, without additional shelter beds, there, there will be, it's very difficult to, to enforce. But as I, as I said, that, that's just one piece of the puzzle. There's several, several things happening all at once to be able to, to address that so that we can enforce and get people off the streets. It's my understanding that Sutter County is, is moving very quickly and that the Board of Supervisors is very interested in, in making that happen very quickly.
Appreciate your answer. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, Councilman, if I may. So the Ninth Circuit established that you have to have a bed for each person you enforce with. And at the Life Building Center, we're reaching Phase Two, we're adding 26 beds. We were cleared for takeoff last council meeting in Marysville. We think that'll quickly fill up because we're near the emergency room. And we actually sort of presumed that we're going to leave a certain amount of beds for Advenus, a certain amount of beds for law enforcement, and then see what we have available for those that just walk up. We haven't done this before, so we know that we've had about 1,200 referrals in the 16 months that we've been open. So if that happens in a 24-hour period, which I don't really think it will, they, once they settle in, they settle in. Really, the game is a bed, you know, housing. So what regional housing is doing is, is a critical key. Yuba County has put its total no-place-like-home initial budgets that way to help make that happen. We've already made as many efforts as we can with what's available and, and local funding. We're underway, we're funded, we're doing it, we're building it. But we're, it's just really a race. It's, I think the solution is here, it's just not as big as the problem. And so as soon as we get to that size, desperation will disappear. I think we'll find a much better community.
Thank you, John.
Very good. Hold on a second.
So Mayor Harris, on May 31st at 9:00 AM is the Joint City Council Board of Supervisors Workshop. I'm at that meeting. County staff will actually be providing an update on their current shelter project and where they are and what their plans are. They will also be providing a, a presentation on what current services they're providing to the homeless in Sutter County. I also believe we'll probably be hearing from Kaya a little bit about her project that she manages also.
All right. All right, so.
Would you like a recommendation for the direction at this time?
Motion is what we're looking for. Is that what you were talking about?
Mr. Mayor, sorry, I don't mean to interrupt, but at this time, I would just close public comment and then bring it back to the council.
Did I even open public comment?
Yes.
All right. All right, we'll close public comment and bring it back to the council. So we have a, I understand in the talk up here, we're going to have two separate motions. So we just do them one at a time. Do you, how about if we discuss what you're going to move for, for clarification purposes?
Okay.
All right. Let's, let's start with, on the end here.
I can take it section by section. Mr. Gill, if you'll start at the top, as you presented tonight, leaving 20% administration as-is, leaving the 15% as-is with the holdback. The next section, the 65% as-is. And my adjustment would be to reduce the 200,000 for the ADA down to 140 and fully fund parks and rec for the playground equipment. That would be my recommendation.
So the consortium is going to get the full 97.5, what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay. That I already say mine?
So basically, it's option number one, but we're taking, I believe you said 60,000 off of the ADA.
60,000.
And finding it elsewhere. We're still finding it, but from somewhere else.
We're going to find it from a different source through SB1 money.
All right. Is that a clear enough motion for you, Mr. Attorney?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
That is for me, too. Anybody care to comment or second?
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? None? Thank you. Thank you very much, Darren.
Thank the rest of you for being here and providing the information, too.
Absolutely, it was very helpful.
Yes, thank you.
Very helpful. Number 22, additional affordable housing for deferred loan of $600,000 with RHA for a 40-unit development at the corner of Garden and Miles. And Darren is back up.
So on February 19th of this year, the city council awarded a deferred loan of $400,000 for the New Haven Court Affordable Housing Project by the Regional Housing Authority, as you mentioned, on the corner of Miles and Garden Highway. There is a extensive discussion on this project. Unfortunately, the project was not awarded a 9% tax credit, and hence the reason why the Regional Housing Authority is back before the city council to request additional funding for this project. This is just a rendering of the project, which is a beautiful project, again, on Miles and Garden Highway. But I wanted to provide the council with the options that are before you this evening. A couple of things. Number one, there was a lot of discussion about a deferred loan never really getting paid back. Is it really a loan? Should it be a grant? So first, I'll, I'll speak on that. The city council does not need to loan the money. They can provide the money directly to the Regional Housing Authority. However, then the Regional Housing Authority would enter into a loan with the developer, a deferred loan with the developer. And if there is ever any funds through residual, residual receipts, then the money would go back to actual the Housing Authority and not the city. So the, so the city council, if you want to provide additional funding tonight, you can either do it as a grant directly to the Regional Housing Authority, or you can direct staff to bring back an agreement, which is a deferred loan agreement between the actual developer and the City of Yuba City. Second are the options for funding, which is, there's 969,000 in your current low-mod housing asset funds. This fund will increase when you vacate the homes that were purchased with low-mod funds on Bridge Street for the widening of Bridge Street. So there's a few homes left. The assumption is, you know, somewhere in the $400,000 to $500,000 range. When those homes are, are vacated and tore down, they will have to use some type of traffic funds to reimburse those dollars. The second one is what's called our Homes-to-Family Capital Maintenance Fund. The city purchased a, a number of distressed properties across the city. Over the last few years, some of those homes have been sold, and as a result, they do not need the total amount that's in that account. There's a little, little over $400,000 in that maintenance account. And the Regional Housing Authority believes that approximately $200,000 could be removed, and they would still have enough money in that account to pay for the maintenance of the existing homes that they're managing. The third one is their, the project would have to pay approximately 1.35 million in impact and connection fees. This project is within the infill area. At this time, I can answer any questions you might have. Also, this evening, you can talk very specifically about just an increase and keep the approval of the $400,000 deferred loan. Or you could look at it all together and say, we want to grant all the money, we want to loan all the money. That is what we're looking for tonight, some direction from city council. And Gus is here from the Housing Authority to answer any questions.
Question for you real quick, Darren, before we open a public comment. Does the 1.35 million in impact fees, does that reflect the 50% reduction for infill areas?
Yes, it does.
It does? Okay. I'll go ahead and open up to public comment. I do have two comment cards here. One is from Gus. Come on up, followed by Tony Curran. If you want to queue yourself up, Tony.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. As Mr. Gill mentioned, we were in the unfortunate position of some of the projects in the capital region that beat us out, just more highly competitive, more local government leverage. One of the things that, that concerns us about the next round of tax credit financing with applications due July 1 is, in the, in round one, there were no projects that went in from Sacramento. There were one from Elk Grove, one from Folsom, and of course, Yuba City's. Typically, they're the big boys on the block with the most leverage, and they're the toughest to beat. We don't believe they're going to sit this next round out. We're, in fact, we heard through the grapevine, they have a couple of projects that they're submitting in round two. So our, our recommendation is, is that you, that we go in aggressive and to try to beat other projects in the region. Another one of the reasons why we would like to obviously, you know, fund this project in the next round is that we're seeing a trend of labor and materials rising about 5% to 10% per year in construction costs. And if we're not successful in this round and we have to apply again, the next round of funding isn't until March of 2020. And we would anticipate that construction costs will go up another 5% to 10%. And, and again, it just comes down to the simplicity of applying for less low-income housing tax credits to the state and coming in with more local government leverage in order to increase our scoring factor with the Tax Credit Allocation Committee. We are pounding the, pounding the pavement, excuse me. We do have another application in with the local consortium, homeless consortium, for a supplemental RFP that they issued for some additional HEAP funds. They opened up an RFP with $227,000, and we've submitted an application to them, but we have not heard yet. And so we're, and, and we talked to the county, and there's, they're saying they're tapped out. They have no other earmarked dollars for affordable housing. They've committed 2.6 million to the project, and, and that's why we're before you today to hopefully get, get a project done. Happy to answer any questions.
CNN, thank you very much. And Mr. Curran?
Hi, I'm Tony Curran, 636 Santa Drive, Yuba City. We've been doing a lot of talking tonight about the homeless, and yes, it is a huge problem. And we've been talking about a lot about temporary shelters. Well, this project is not a temporary shelter. This will get, this will have 40 units to take people off the streets, not just for one night, not just for two nights, but long-term. And so I just urge you to find the money to allow this program to go ahead. We need more like it. As, as everybody says, you know, nobody has one answer to this problem, and it is a big problem. So I just urge you to try and find the funds to allow this project to go ahead. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Anybody else from the public care to comment? Bring it back to council for comment. Oh, wait a minute. I missed you. Sorry, sir. I got your card in your hand, that's why I didn't know you were coming. That's okay.
I just wanted to mention that, Joseph, oh, Joseph Hale. I just want to say that I think this kind of goes in alignment with, one of the many things we're trying to do is, you know, once people go through the program, we really need places for them to be able to go in a, in a permanent way. And one of the ways that they can get large grant funding, these, you know, for these million-dollar developments, is more assistance from the county and cities and places like that. I think what you guys have the opportunity to do is turn whatever money you could put towards this project in addition to what's already there, towards a stronger application that could end up in bringing millions of dollars into the project to help get these homes built. I just wanted to say, I definitely support the project, you know, and working with Habitat for Humanity, we definitely see the need for housing, and we definitely look at the numbers, and we have a great need for low-income housing in this area. We just don't have enough. And I think this is one of the pathways to get there. So thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. All right, back to council for comment. Did I miss somebody else again? All right. Both of you want to talk?
I'll go fast. I can't speak for John, but I'll go fast. My name is Kayah Galicia. I'm a board member for the Sutter Yuba Homeless Consortium. And I wanted to mention that the Sutter Yuba Homeless Consortium does support this project as well. I mentioned that we have been working with the Bye County Homeless Services Group on the strategic plan and that development of affordable, I'm sorry, development of more permanent housing is, is one of the, the priorities of, of the group. And currently, there are no dedicated permanent supported housing units for the chronically homeless, which this project will support that population specifically. Chronically homeless is defined as people who are lacking a regular nighttime residence for over a year, or who have had four episodes of homelessness in the last three years, and who also have a disabling condition. And those disabling conditions range from a physical disability to, to a chronic health condition, to an ongoing mental illness, or even a developmental disability. So, so with, without a, a dedicated project for this population, these folks are living outside. And so, and I, I hope that the council will, will support the, the development and, and putting monetary dollars towards this project. Thank you.
Mayor, I'll be fast. Total support of RHA's quest. I think it's a right balance here. We have taken a regional approach on, on these issues, and it got tested recently. I was sitting with Mark Bertha, who is the president for the Hard Rock Hotel. They're about to hire 1,100 new people. Many of the people and families that'll be living in these places are going to be living in these places. in these places are going to be facing opportunities for benefits and moving up in their status. But he did show me a couple of the new shirts that they want to come out with, and one of them had, the casino bit had a butterfly in the end. And I said, not in this region. You've seen the city of Yuba City. You're going to have to put a duck on there. So we got it switched. So we're all about sticking together through this and getting our solutions together. But you'll see the new t-shirt. It has a duck on it.
I thought we were the city of chickens.
Roosters, roosters, roosters.
Now you get our attention that way. All right. Is anybody else? Nothing. All right. So now I'm going to try for the fourth time to bring it back to council for comment, please.
Through the mayor, I think that, I'm going to speak for myself, certainly support this project. But I'm going to go back to something that I feel strongly about, and that is providing this temporary shelter. And it's my understanding, and Mr. Gale was kind enough to validate, that low-mod housing can be used towards a temporary shelter. And so with the fact that Yuba City and Sutter County and others are going to get together on May 31 to hear what the county's plan is, and hopefully have an understanding of timeline, I do think that we want to consider at least some of our low-mod housing monies be set aside at this particular point in time to potentially assist and facilitate that temporary shelter. Again, this isn't against this project. I do think it has some features that are a little opulent to me, just from a site point of view. But I do understand the need for the housing. But again, just myself speaking to my fellow council members is the low-mod housing and its ability to be used for the temporary shelter, I'd like for us to consider that as we move forward with a decision on this matter.
Do you have maybe a suggested adjustment to the request or anything in mind?
I'm comfortable with where we're at right now. But at the same time, I guess, and I go back to what are the other jurisdictions being asked, and what are they doing? And maybe this is perhaps a question for Gus or whomever can answer that. I don't care what it is at this point in time for our city is, we want to contribute, but what is our fair share? And whether it's tourism, or lodging associations, or what have you, what are the other jurisdictions providing? Are we in line? Are we more? Are we less? Should we be more? We have a lot of population. I get that. But before I put a number on anything, I guess I'm looking for perhaps, please, thank you.
For the New Haven Court project, council member Boom Garden, Sutter and Yuba Counties combined have committed $2.6 million. The Yuba-Sutter Homeless Consortium has committed $450,000. The regional housing authority by board action has committed the value of the land, which came back at $560,000. The regional housing authority, also by our board's action, has committed an annual operating subsidy of $234,000 approximately, and that's in perpetuity. And the Yuba City Unified School District has financially committed $60,000 in fee waivers. And then we have one application pending, as I mentioned earlier, with the consortium for $227,000, I believe. Those are the current financial commitments for the project. And the tax credit application is in the $8 to $9 million ballpark.
Thanks. This might be a question for our city manager or maybe Mr. Gale. It looks like you're asking us to consider a waiver of up to $1.35 million in impact and connection fees?
We have no recommendation. I'm just letting you know what the impact fees are. So if you did want to waive them, you know what the impact would be.
Okay, so let me take this to the next level. Is this consistent with other projects we have done in the past to waive impact and connection fees?
Not to my knowledge.
No.
Okay.
This is the first time, oh, to the mayor, this is the first time something like this has come to council, Mark. And is it okay if I keep going?
Sure.
On this also, the $600,000 that they're asking for, we have homes to this fund. When the homes are tore down on Bridge Street, that money will be replaced in this fund. So it's not like this fund is going to be empty. So the money will go back into it. And this is helping them, this money is helping them because of the challenges that these other jurisdictions has for them to get this 9% loan. So it's just assisting them, knowing that they have it, it's guaranteed, and it's there for them. And like I said, it's going to help the homeless issue. It's going to be permanent housing, and it's going to get 40 people off the streets, maybe even 80 if they're couples. And it's going to be a great thing for the community. And like I said, it's going to be, like I said, it's going to be 40 more folks or 80 more folks that are off the streets. And I would like to make it, is it okay to make a recommendation and they're wait?
Let's make sure everybody has an opportunity to comment.
I'll let everybody talk then. I'll wait then. But I just want to let council know that this money is going to be replaced when they turn on the houses on Bridge Street, and the money's going to be put back in. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to add for council clarification with discussion about waiving impact fees. Any fees that are waived would have to be replaced with general fund monies. So in fact, would be, it's not a forgiving of the fees. The development wouldn't have to pay for the fees. The city would then reimburse the fund for the respective funds for those fees out of the general fund.
Interesting. Thank you for that.
So it costs us 2.7, is what you're trying to say?
Through the mayor. Taking a good look at this project, and before I make any comments, I'm like council member Boom Garden. I'm in support of it, in its concept and its ideas. We have a homeless issue here that's got to be resolved. But again, we've got to be looking at what is the most prudent thing to do. Being a conservative-minded individual, yes, I realize that, you know, we're going to have money come back at some point, but that is at some point. I'm looking at what is in the coffers and what we are committing ourselves to at any given point in time. There's a myriad of ways that we can approach this. You know, first of all, I'm comfortable where what we have approved already. That's my position right now. But is there any other things that we can do? I came in tonight after meeting with Gus and going over the project and looking at things, with the idea of maybe we could do an in-kind with waiving some of the impact fees, as Mr. Mayor, you had mentioned before. But that does have a secondary effect to the general fund, because we have to make those efforts whole. We have to start looking at what is coming at us in the future. We know that we've got to solve a homeless problem. With this, and my discussions with Gus, is it's a great project, but as Gus said in his very first presentation, it's going to be first come, first served as to who gets in there. Am I correct, Gus? That was what you said in your first? Just yes or no? I think I'm on the right track.
It is, but it's through the behavioral health services and the hands of hope toward the service.
Gotcha. Okay. Where I was going with that is even though we have the 40 units, there's no guarantee that that's going to get 40 people off the street or 80 people off the street. They could be coming from other places. The idea of a homeless shelter is an instant guarantee, whether they want it or not, we have a bed for them. And we have to be prepared, once we have further information, to be in support of that, because we have a huge issue here. If you look at the businesses around town, I drive up and down these city streets, and I see homeless people on doorways of businesses. I see them tucked in alleyways. That affects this economy. We can't effectively get them off the streets until we have that shelter, or a shelter of some sorts. We got to make sure that we're poised and ready to do what is right to fix that problem, so that our law enforcement can actually, for lack of a better terms, take back our city to where we can have commerce, where people can walk, where people aren't getting woken up at 2:00 in the morning with people going through their trash. To me, that's a priority. I love the project. Gus and I talked about it. There's, I think there's some things in there that were wants from our planning department, our previous planning department, with architectural ideas versus what we can actually get away with. So I think there's savings in there. We talked, for one, about recessed windows, which added, just some of the things we talked about, they added at least $200,000 to $300,000 to the total cost. So if we could revisit that, now the package starts looking a little bit more attractive because the total cost comes down. As much as I'm in support of it, I just, the coffers are only so deep, Mr. Mayor. And my idea that I was thinking tonight about the impact fees, it's just like giving the money away. It's just, there's only so much money. Maybe it's something we can reach back through, but we only have a total of about 1.4. 200 of that is committed, and you're asking for basically about 90% of it. That takes away any opportunity when Sutter County comes to us and says, hey, we want 500,000 or 400,000 for a homeless shelter. The difference between what we're tasked with and what everyone else is, is our position, we have to take care of a city. Homelessness is just one aspect of our city. We've got roadways. We've got safety. We got all the infrastructure. And the good things that everyone else is doing, I applaud you, but you have a direct focus, and it's for, everything can go for that. So at this point, I'm comfortable with, Mr. Mayor, and I'll stop rambling.
Sure. Thank you. Yes.
Gus, can you come up to the podium again, please, sir? If this project's successful, and it's built, and we have tenants in it, will they be tenants from other communities? Would they be Sutter County residences?
Sutter and Yuba Counties have the live/work preference per our guidelines.
Okay. And if we prolong this loan or grant that you're asking for, it's just, it's going to just, we're trying to cure a cause, but it's going to just, it's going to cost you even more a year later from now, or two years later from now, by you finally get it. It's set this price now, and if we prolong it, if you don't get it, we prolong it. It's going to be, like I said, 5% to 10% more next year, 5% more the following year.
That is a trend we're seeing with construction costs.
Right. Yes. So as Councilman Shaw said, I guess our last developer or director put a lot of wants on there. Maybe we can come back and discuss, would that be new plans, or take the Cadillac items off it and get the lower in, and make it lower for you to build, or a little bit more reasonable for you to build?
Maybe Honda Accord, not quite a Cadillac. But we're already entitled through the Planning Commission approvals. And so if we have to make any changes to the plans, we have to incur architectural costs, engineering costs. And then, of course, it would have to be routed back to your city staff, planning department, and potentially through Planning Commission again. And so the old adage of time is money, and, you know, that's just a big concern. And it would incur more cost.
Yeah. Thank you, Gus. And concerning Councilman Shaw's saying, when are we going to get put the money back in this fund? Well, the bridge is going to be done in 2020, and they want that road. We want Bridge Street done from Cooper to Gray by 2020. So the money would be replaced within the next year. So it's not like it's five years from now or three years from now. The money should be, because the houses have to be tore down before we can fix that road. That's just my comment. We'll see what we'll go from there.
Thank you.
Through the mayor. Looking at the, just looking at the breakdown of the finances without looking at anything else, just in that aspect. So Gus mentioned that we have, Yuba and Sutter County gave $2.6 million, which, you know, basic math, that's $1.3 million each jurisdiction. Gus mentioned that the housing authority is contributing about $794,000. The consortium's contributing about $450,000. And if with the additional funds of $227,000, that'd be $677,000 as matching funds to this. And so from our last discussion, we looked at $600,000 to help with the additional, possibly, to be competitive in the funding of this particular grant. So when we look at the grant, we're looking at permanent housing. And we're having conversations about temporary shelter. We're kind of mixing the two aspects of living situations for humans in this community. One is, you take a person off the street, that they're doing something, you're just putting them in temporary housing. At what point do we put them in permanent housing? Because there's going to be a need for the permanent housing. So you can't put the horse before the, how's that go, folks?
Car before the horse.
Car before the horse. Thank you. Never was good at that. Not going to pretend now. That, how are we going to do that, gentlemen? So I guess that's my question. Part of this is looking at it as a by county, and we're looking at, as some of you already said, is 40 units. Some of the preferences of the individuals that are going to be selected are homeless military vets. And that is a need in this community. We have VASH, we have all these other different particular funding sources that are available. But I think if we just keep pushing along and not making a real statement as a city to say, you know, I think 900,000 would be a feasible contribution to this. If we are going to be selling some of our property in the city in the future because of the expansion on Bridge Street and other things, the city could potentially regain some additional monies, which goes into this particular fund. So if we were to give 900,000, we still have approximately about, what, 500 or something thousand available to contribute for this temporary shelter if we want to do that later. But I'm just, I'm concerned that we're looking at just the fiscal amounts. I'm pointing it out. That's where we're at at this point. And to go back to 600, let's give 300 more. I'm not saying the city's rich. It's not coming out of our fiscal other monies. It's not coming out of our general fund. It's coming out of some very specific funding that has been set aside for issues, particularly what we have in front of us right now. And in front of us is this opportunity to be competitive in the region, to build 40 units that potentially can cost us 15% less than it would cost us if we were able to get $1 million by March of 2020. But now we're looking at additional construction costs or other conditions. And if we're going to ask the housing authority to change the design of this, because perhaps homeless individuals should not have nice, you know, buildings to live in, or a place that they can park their car, I think that this is an opportunity to really demonstrate the strength of this community. And the community is that we want to be a model for the region to demonstrate that we want to help our homeless in a very compassionate, but yet cooperative way regionally. And buy 40 units for emotionally behavioral issues, and we hear this over and over, law enforcement- Law enforcement has said it. Many of our homeless have mental health issues. We don't know where to take them. We don't know what to do. Here's the opportunity. Here's the chance for us to do something. So I suggest that we put 900,000 in it. And we will get the money back with other options that we know well as a council. So that's all I have to say. So thank you.
I do want to clarify one thing. I never suggested that they wouldn't be in nice housing. I just suggested, I thought this looked a bit opulent, respectfully.
Thank you. Thank you. I just wanted to clarify that.
So again, I need a little bit of clarification here. And perhaps, Mr. Gale, you can help me with this. And that's on the home to families capital and maintenance account. The staff report seems to indicate that we could pull 200,000 from this account for this project. Can you just help me understand a little bit more about what the impact that would have if we, if we were to do, allocate the 200,000 towards the 600,000 deferred loan that we talked about?
So when the city originally began the home to families program, I believe we purchased 19 homes. Is that correct, Gus? And since that time, we've sold seven. And as a result, that, that leaves only 12. And there's not the need for the, that, that capital fund was set up thinking that there was gonna be 19 homes. So based upon the current conditions of those properties, the Housing Authority went through and identified and said, okay, of that 200, sorry, of the $440,000 approximately that's in, if there's a reduction in 200,000, it would not impact their ability to maintain the existing 12 homes that are part of the homes to family program that the city purchased with low mod, housing funds, actually.
So.
So no impact.
Thank you. So for, again, for the council's consideration, this is where I'm at, is that we're gonna have a briefing, a session on May the 31st. We're going to have the ability, in my understanding, is that the application due date is in July. Is that correct? Okay. We have a June 4th scheduled council meeting. I think we'll have a better handle about what's going on on May 31st from whether, where the county is moving forward. I personally would be in support of taking the, the previously approved amount and adding the 200,000 available from the house to families capital and maintenance account, which in effect would give you up to $800,000. Why? We, we approved a deferred loan up to 600K.
That, Councilman, that was actually a lower amount if they got the money from the consortium, because it was to offset if they didn't. So it's back at the lower amount, which I believe was 400 or 450?
Four to 450.
The original, that we, we authorized the intent to do alone.
Well, the first one was 400. We gave them, that's already there.
Well, that was.
This is additional.
Yeah. Sorry, sorry, Mr. Cardoza. You're, you're, you're on the wrong line of thought. The loan that we approved, or we said we would do, was the original four. But we said we would go up to six if they didn't get the money. So it's only four. So are you talking pulling another two to make it six, or pulling another four to make it eight? That's what I was trying to clarify.
Or to make it eight.
Okay.
I'll second that. Oh, I guess I better wait.
Was an emotion, correct?
Was it a motion?
Grace had something also she has, has mentioned.
Sorry.
So we're kind of kicking around the idea of how many hundreds of thousands of dollars we're gonna give the program, even though I, I know we're all in support of the project. I do have, also share some of the concerns of how, I think the word opulent was used, which is pretty good, especially when I saw the word exercise room in there. But to go back to the drawing board, literally, it's gonna cost us more money than anything. What is the council's pleasure, given the idea that we're going to have a meeting here soon with the county? We can discuss things. We have time to bring this, to continue this item, bring it back on June 4th and voting, then?
I can make the decision now.
I'm suggesting it. You can say yes or no.
I disagree with you, but we'll come back on June.
So no, but yes?
I guess, no, I have no option, right? How about that?
You have, you have a vote.
No, 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 I'd like to vote today.
Okay.
There you go.
Apparently, I just made a motion that we continue the item until June 4th.
Mayor, before you.
Ma'am.
Vote on that. I would like to ask Mr. Becerra if this impacts their application in any way, in terms of if they have to wait until June 4th for a final consideration from council.
Our tax credit investor and lenders have today kind of calendared on their calendars in hope of getting to an amount that we inserted into our performa. So it, it will just impact their review of the performa and where we are with, it just puts us in danger of applying for, being ready for July 1.
In danger of being ready.
They want the facts now, not July 1. That's what you're saying, Gus?
Well, July 1st's definitely a little too late. But, you know, I, I don't know. I, I don't know. I'd have to call them, and I don't think they're available right now.
I'm gonna maintain the motion that we continue to June 4th. And I think if they want the, the project to go forward, they'll find it the time to make it happen, personally. I've worked under, we all have, under some deadlines before. So basically, by, by sitting here talking, I made the motion. Do I have a second on that?
Second.
In favor?
Aye.
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 No.
Oppose?
And that's a second, no?
Okay. So motion carries. We'll see you back on June 4th. Next item?
Mayor, before we move on to the next item, we need a point of clarification on item 21.
We already did, oh, I'm sorry.
Right, no.
Yes.
We need a point of clarification, item 21.
Sure.
When the motion was made, was that for the 97,500 to, to continue to hold back 50%?
Yes.
I'm getting a yes, and I'm getting a no.
Well, no.
I made the motion. That's the motion I made.
But I have another council member shaking as said no, that that's not what he thought he was voting on.
We're giving 97 the whole thing to the consortium. Yeah.
No, it was, it was as proposed. I said, as proposed, the 20% on the first, the 15% as proposed. The only change was in the final section.
So I think that we had a different, I think council had a different understanding, some of the members, of what they were voting on? So.
Sorry, and I'll apologize. When I heard Councilmember Cardoza second the motion, the language that I heard was the full funding. And then I thought, I saw you nod, yes, Councilmember Shaw. So that, that was what I had heard.
No, I was, I stated as proposed. That's what I meant. What was, and Mr. Gale said, he heard me loud and clear. It was as proposed tonight. The 97, hold back half.
What I would, would recommend at this point is to, the council can do a motion for reconsideration. And then that way, it clears the, the record. And the issue can be brought back up for a, a clear first and second. And I apologize. That's, I thought the motion was corrected with Councilmember Cardoza, Cardoza's additional language. And so I, I thought it was a great two, and I apologize.
No, I didn't know of any additional language.
I misread the nod, and I apologize. That's my fault.
My understanding was as proposed, with the exception of 60,000 from ADA being funded elsewhere.
Right. The final section is the only thing that changed. Everything else was just as presented.
Same as option one.
So the presentation says we're gonna give them 97.5.
It said we're also holding back half of it.
Doesn't say it on the board. It just says 97.
Staff report.
Read your, yeah. Read your staff report. It's in there. That's what was proposed.
Okay.
So this is new.
So it would just, it would just take a motion and a second to reconsider the, the issue. And as long as there's a majority vote in favor of the second, then we could reconsider.
So a motion to reconsider means a motion to come back and do another, and clarify the motion?
Correct.
Essentially?
Basically, we just do the motion over again so that it's a, it's a clear vote on exactly what, what.
I will make that motion that we do that.
Second.
All right. In favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I, I have a clarification, because I'm in agreement with part of the motion, but not all of the motion. So how do we work that out?
Which.
That means you need to reconsider the entire motion.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's what we're doing.
Yeah.
Basically, yeah.
Correct.
So, okay, so Councilmember Shaw, would you please remake your motion?
Remake my, Mr. Mayor, I almost need the, the, can you roll back the presentation real fast so I can roll through it, please, there? There we go, uh, there we go. Mr. Mayor, I move that our CB, CBDG allocation be as presented, 20% administrative, 15% public services, with 50% holdback, 65% as presented, and 65% for public facilities, removing 60,000 from the Public Works ADA and awarding that to the Parks Department for the playground equipment, and that the remainder of the ADA would come from SB 1 money.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Are we clear on the motion?
You want to comment?
Yes.
I want to comment.
You want to comment? Go ahead.
Um, I agree with everything except the consortium. So how are we gonna do this, Mr. Attorney? I'll say yes to everything except for the one.
Unfortunately, you, it's an up or down vote on, on the motion. So it can't be, the motion pending can't be amended. If there's not a majority, then it can come back for an additional motion. But if it's passed by a majority, then that would be the adopted motion of the council.
Well, that's a stickler.
So for clarification, Vice Mayor, what is it that you're, your sticking point?
I'd like to give the consortium the whole 97.5, not hold back 50%.
So as broken down right here?
Because they're gonna, they're gonna spread that love to the county. They're gonna, they're gonna give them the money. Why do we need to hold on to it for them when they're gonna give it to them? They were all here talking earlier. If we give them the money, they're gonna spread it to the county. They've already gave them 450. Oh.
Okay.
Wait a minute. Wait, Mr. Gale said, no, they're not gonna give them the money. I thought they said earlier that they would.
John Nicoletti sat up there and patted his heart.
So as part of the Yuba-Sutter homeless consortium's application, there's a variety of different sub recipients that receive money. Salvation Army, Habitat for Humanity, a, a variety of, of folks. So when, when we say hold, hold back, all the money, yes, would go towards, to the Yuba-Sutter homeless consortium. However, 50% of it would be set aside for a, for a homeless shelter that the county has proposed on Live Oak Boulevard. If by the end of the year, they have not moved forward with that, then all the money would go as requested by the, by the homeless consortium. That's what is before you, under the staff recommendation.
So a question for clarification. So you're saying that that money's going to go directly to Sutter County?
No, it would go to the homeless consortium. Then the homeless consortium would, would, would have a sub recipient of the Salvation Army.
Yes. So in, the money's gonna go to the Salvation, I mean, it's gonna go to the Yuba-Sutter homeless consortium.
Correct. However, not as they requested.
Correct.
In a different way.
With a, with a, with a specific requirement that the money goes to the Salvation Army for the homeless shelter, but the money goes to the Yuba-Sutter homeless consortium?
Yes, Councilman.
Okay.
So with that said, the money's gonna go there anyway.
Okay. I thought we were just gonna hold it out and keep it and sit there and wait for it.
It was muddied in the conversation. I agree with you, Councilman.
Okay.
All right.
So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And we're clear?
We're clear. Third time's a charm.
All right. Let's go here to number 24 regarding the Boge-Stewart Master Plan, master change agreement. Thank you, Diana.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. It's been a little while since I've been on, over here, and I feel very rusty. So to give you some background, the Boge-Stewart Master Plan guides the orderly development of 741.5 acres located along the southern edge of Yuba City outside of the existing sphere of influence. So here's a map showing the, the location of Boge-Stewart Master Plan. Do you have the pointer? Okay. So we don't have the pointer. So the northern edge is Boge Road. The southern edge is Stewart Road. The western edge is Walton Avenue. And the eastern edge would be the levee. So in 2000, Sutter County and Yuba City entered into a master tax exchange agreement, which delineates allocation of local tax revenues, including property and sales tax, and provision of local services such as police, sheriff, and fire. The current MTEA only applies to the city's existing sphere of influence. The draft Boge-Stewart Master Plan itself and the environmental impact report were released for public comment on May 3rd, with the comment period closing on June 17th. The goal is to have the Planning Commission consider the draft BSMP and draft EIR in September, followed by council consideration in October. So if the project is approved by the city council, the next step will be to file an application with the Sutter County Local Agency Formation Commission, requesting expansion of the city's sphere of influence. However, in order for the LAFCO Board to consider the item, the city and county must agree on a master tax exchange agreement. Must be in place. So to facilitate discussion, staff is requesting that the city council designate two council members to assist with negotiations with the county. And it's anticipated that Sutter County will do the same in appointing two supervisors to assist, assist with negotiations as well. So Sutter County has hired David Tausig and Associates to serve as chief negotiator for sales and property tax sharing negotiations. And the city has hired Al Johnson Consulting to assist with negotiations. So the recommendation is to designate two council members to assist with the negotiations of a Boge-Stewart Master Tax, Boge-Stewart Master Plan, Master Tax Exchange Agreement, with a period of less than one year. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions right away? Okay, we have some, I'll open up for public comment. I have one speaker card from Mr. Mike Short on the item. If anyone else would like to speak, feel free to queue up on the, at the podium.
Mayor Hanson, city council, excuse me, Harris. City Council, good evening. I live down at, oh, Mike Short, 2347 Oregon Way. I live down in Shanghai Bend. And I presume that we were at one time I live down in Shanghai Bend, and I presume that we were at one time falling within your sphere of influence, or whatever you call it, down that direction, and with that did not come what I believe to be a proper level of responsibility on your part to complete different improvements down in that area. So I'm a little concerned about you moving on to a different area, and yet we have the same problem maybe. So I think you need to understand, and of course, I'm sure you do, that, you know, sphere of influence and the city's limits also brings with it responsibilities on your part. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Short. Seeing nobody else queuing up, we'll close public comment, bring it back to the council for comment or action.
Mr. Mayor, considering you guys gave me a reprieve for the first few months, and that's up my avenue, I would volunteer to serve if you would so like, sir.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. One down.
Mr. Mayor, or through the mayor, having had some previous experience with the master tax share agreement back in 2000, I'd be happy to sit on this effort with Councilperson Shaw.
Very much appreciated. Thank you both very much. So we have appointed council members Shaw and Boom Garden. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right.
So do we motion that we accept these two phenomenal council members to be on the master tax, and they'll get us the best agreement in the entire region, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Thank you.
That's exactly what I was going to do.
No option for no votes here? I mean, I'm reconsidering. We already reconsidered once.
Thank you very much. Do I have a motion to approve the two appointees?
So done.
All right.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Very well. Done deal. Thank you very much, Diana. Number 25, also Diana, our interim city manager, regarding wastewater treatment facility, biosolids disposal.
So you know that this next topic is near and dear to my heart?
Oh, yes.
So we talked about biosolids. So the process of treating wastewater produces concentrated solids or sledge, also referred to as biosolids. So in 2011, staff analyzed different options for biosolid disposal and determined that the preferred method was to haul it to Ostrom Road landfill. It was determined to be the most cost-effective option. It resolved odor and fly issues related to biosolids. Previous practice was to spread the biosolids out at the wastewater treatment facility, let it dry, and then haul it off. And one of my first jobs when I first was hired for Yuba City was to go out and survey the sledge pile, which was a mountain at that time, to determine the volume that needed to be hauled off. So I'd like to prevent from having any other staff members have to do that in the future. So in August of 2011, the city began contracting with Recology to haul biosolids off-site. In December of 2011, city council authorized a side letter agreement with Recology for the removal. The cost was a flat rate per haul of $769.32. That's in today's dollars. At the time it was approved, it was a less amount. However, the side letter is scheduled to expire September 30, 2019. So as part of the solid waste and recycling franchise services request for proposals processed in November 2017, the city asked respondents to include a proposal for the removal of biosolids. Recology was the only respondent that provided a proposal at $1,225 per haul. The city's consultant continued to negotiate with Recology, and Recology proposed a different rate structure of haul plus disposal with the cost of $375 per haul, with $450 on Saturdays, and then $35 per ton. With the side letter agreement ending September 30, staff needs to coordinate a new side letter agreement with Recology for the removal of biosolids. Concurrently, staff is working with West Yost and Associates to evaluate long-term biosolid removal disposal methods, and, but it's not anticipated that this will be completed until early 2020. So the fiscal impact, you can tell based upon the slides, we're currently paying approximately $769. The cost in terms of what was submitted through the proposal is to go to not only a cost per haul, but also a per-tonnage rate. And so this would result in a significant increase in the cost for removal of the biosolids, and this is not currently accounted for in the sewer rates. And so what I'm requesting of council is to authorize the city manager to negotiate a side letter agreement with Recology, Yuba Sutter, for the hauling and disposal of biosolids from the city's wastewater treatment facility. One of the things that I noted in the staff report is there's legislation related to organics in which the Recology is required to address organics entering the landfill. And so they have certain criteria and that they have to meet with certain timeframes. So one of the reasons that the cost for the biosolid removal disposal is going up is not only is it taking longer to haul the biosolids to the landfill just based upon increase in traffic, but they're now also going to have to account for that in terms of their daily loads. Previously, they've been able to use it as daily cover, and they didn't have to account for that. So that's one of the reasons why you're seeing such a large increase in the, the proposed costs. So with that, I have the recommendation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right. Anybody from the public card a comment on the item? Open that up. Seeing none, we'll close that, bring it back to council for comment or action.
Have a quick question.
Yes.
So if I understand the presentation correctly, the city had, had a chance to negotiate the biosolid rate during the, during the solid waste negotiations, but opted not to do that?
The, it was part of the RFP process. Recology was the only one to submit a proposal, and through the negotiation process, and ultimately in the end, the franchise agreement does not address biosolids.
But there was that opportunity.
There was the opportunity.
Thank you.
And Diana, we don't really know why the other competitors, if you will, did not submit a biosolid proposal?
They would need to take the biosolids to a landfill, and so with Ostrom Road landfill being the nearest landfill, they would be basically paying Recology to accept the biosolids. So in terms of the ability to make a profit on that, I think it would be pretty limited because they don't have a landfill nearby.
All right. It's a big deal. So we don't have that accounted for, and so what we're looking for is that an increased bottom line with these new regulations and fees, we're looking at an increase to our rates, wastewater rates, probably.
Not necessarily. We'll go through and evaluate it. Also, you know, we recently updated the water master plan. We're in the process of updating the wastewater master plan. All of those are going to have to be factored into the next rate study, and so it's difficult to, yes, it's an increase in cost, but it's something that's going to have to be evaluated as part of a much larger picture in terms of, you know, all of the elements that go into the rate structure.
Okay. Good.
Sir? Through the mayor. Ms. Langley, you know where I already stand on many of the rates that we charge our customers, and they bear about all that they can bear at current. Saying that, you know, we went through previous presentations, and our water treatments running 50% debt service is what the base rate's going for, and 30% on the sewer side, so we, we have a lot of debt service we have to do. I say all that to go back to, we went through with former council members, I'm not referring to my current colleagues, we went through hell for about a year and a half here in the city with that whole solid waste thing. And as you said, this was brought up to the prior city manager and the former council members, that this was supposed to be part of that, and this is a huge issue, because apparently when you came to the city, you inherited a big pile of, you know, stuff you had to go away. Yeah, I thought I'd get a joke. Did you remind and bring to their attention, was this just basically ignored by the prior leadership that's no longer here, that this should have been handled properly before, and now we're left to pick up these pieces and deal with this?
So, I was not involved in the negotiation process in terms of the development of the RFP. I did request that the biosolid removal be included in the RFP, which it was, and then throughout the negotiation process, I inquired as to the status of the proposal for biosolid removal. In terms of the decision that was made to not include it in the franchise agreement, I was not part of those discussions. I don't know who was, and so I can't say it was city council, it was city manager, it was the consultant. I wasn't involved, and so I can't speak to how that process occurred. I just know at the end of the day, it wasn't included in the franchise agreement, and so therefore, we need to address it through a side letter.
Okay. And my understanding is if we don't do this come September, you're back to a big pile out on the south end of town?
I mean, Recology might be willing to continue to accept it. It's not going to be at the same price I'm sure that we're paying today, and so it's in our best interest to negotiate a new side letter.
Thank you.
And, and the only reason why this is going up is because of the state throwing the, charging them.
That's one part of it. You also have longer haul times.
Right, correct.
More, the gas is, costs more, all of those factor into it.
Yes.
Comment?
I'll make a motion.
All right, go ahead.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion for the wastewater treatment facility biosolids disposal. Authorize the city manager to negotiate a side letter agreement with Recology, Yuba Sutter, for hauling disposal of biosolids from the city's wastewater treatment facility.
I'll second.
All right. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. Thank you very much. Appreciate that information, Diana. Moving on to business from the city council, beginning with Councilmember Boom Garden.
Thank you. Just a few quick things. Attended a awards presentation last night hosted by Assemblyman James Gallagher and Senator Jim Nielsen to recognize and honor graduates of the workforce development or career technical education over at Boyd Hall. This was a signing ceremony, much like you would see for, for people going to get scholarships. It was a, there was 40 people that were honored, and it was really a good event, in concert with trying to make sure that we are addressing the needs of developing our workforce. It was an excellent opportunity to recognize these folks as they move on into their trade schools. Things I was able to attend, thank you, Chief Landon, I was able to attend the badge pinning of Sergeant Slade, a great asset to the police department. Attended the LAFCO meeting. I want to thank Councilwoman Espandola for sitting in for me on the Sutter Buttes Flood Control Agency while I had another appointment. And finally, was able to attend the cap-to-cap, and I know there's a lot of talk about trips and their value, and that was one of the reasons I wanted to attend. I wanted to see for myself what value, going back to Washington, DC, and meeting with the, the staffs of John Guaramendi and Doug Lamolfe, as well as interacting with regional civic leaders. And there is value in that, and I was on a public safety committee, which was comprised of both staff members from, from agencies in Sacramento, Placer County, Yuba, Yuba County, et cetera, and some elected officials. And we've put forth some pretty significant ideas to these lawmakers in regards to things like evacuation processes, disaster response. There is value in this. I think you have to monitor it in concert with our ability to afford it, but I was, I was honored to attend. I think it does have value, and I met some, some pretty important people that will continue to provide their value to our agencies as we reach out to them for their expertise. With that, that's it.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Espandola.
I want to begin by saying, I apologize, Councilmember Boom Garden, I wasn't saying your term earlier, so I just want to, I know your heart, so it wasn't in that aspect, so I apologize if it came off that way. And thank you for letting me go to the Sutter Flood Control Meeting for you. I actually really enjoyed it. It was a really interesting group of gentlemen, and I learned quite a bit of how quickly a meeting can work, but also how collaboratively that group is. It's really a good group. I also attended the cap-to-cap, and similar to what Councilman Boom Garden mentioned, you know, sometimes you have to go to see it to really know if it's value or not, and there's tremendous value to it. Since coming, I was on the Workforce and Education Committee, which tied well to my background and experience, and coming back, we had the government school liaison meeting with Yuba City and White School District. So I was able to share with, in that meeting, some of the things that we discussed at the federal level in being able to, you know, work towards some potential changes coming into the future in, in education. And, and the whole, the whole group we're in that made some really good connections that which we're following up and having some meetings here in the near future, so as, as things develop, I'll share. So we're, we're working on some really interesting, new potential things happening. Also went to the, with Councilmen Shaw and Cardosa. We attended the tour of the temple in Oakland, and that was just a beautiful temple. Oh, my gosh. I never experienced such a tremendous opportunity to see potentially that the Mormon temple, how would I say that, the Mormon temple, to, to possibly maybe develop something locally here in the future. So that, that was enlightening, and, and I was very honored to be invited and to go with a group of people. Went to the, as many others, went to the Peace Officer Memorial Ceremony. Well done, Chief. Well, well done. Even under the circumstances of the rain and thunder and everything else, it was well done with respect. So I won't carry on because I'm, I'm sure others will probably share on that. Went to the Citizens Academy graduation. That was another, just a really neat event, to see the range of community members and their excitement to be part of our community. One gal was mentioning she was excited about giving people tickets. I'm not exactly sure where she's going to, but I think she wanted to give her husband a ticket, the first one, so. And, and many other really interesting things have happened recently. The, the thing that I attended today, and our mayor gave a nice little welcoming remarks this morning at our Sacramento Certified Champions, which is through the Greater Sacramento Economic Council, and Darren was there as well, and I learned so much about the potential and development in, in our community, and so it was worth the afternoon to be there in, on a regional basis, and learning about how small businesses or large businesses could potentially consider our area as their choice of coming in and being part of our community. So doing more of that. So thank you so much.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Shaw?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before I start, famous line from a movie which kind of sums up what my last month has been is, "I'm back." I'm not peering through the door, sorry. We came out of tax season, and we started and had the honor of working on the budget with the mayor and Diana Langley and Robin and our department heads. Lot of good work done there. Look forward to our budget workshop coming up in about a week, and that's where the, the biggest part of my time was spent over the last several weeks. Was able to attend the chamber breakfast with the State of the Homeless. Also, it was nice seeing the, I attended the Bank of Feather River Flag Raising Ceremony, and it's nice to see businesses here in town that take the opportunity to fly the Stars and Stripes, but not only that, they went the extra mile, and they brought in the Honor Guard and stuff and did a little ceremony and basically, you know, kicked their first day off right on the corner of their bridge street. So I want to say thank you to them for honoring our, our nation. Government School Liaison, attended that. Look forward to future things coming up there. Basically, it was a lot of sharing of information as far as status of projects. Did some chamber events. If you haven't, check out Natalie Severson Photography, new business there on Pluma Street. Award-winning photographer, great work, great lady, and I'm glad that they're in our community. The Oakland Temple Visit, and Mr. Gell, thank you to you and the entire LDS community for the opportunity to go down. I was able to have some offline conversations with one of the 70s, which I believe was Pantel or something. I can't remember his last name, but you'll, you'll know who I'm talking about more than likely, but good conversations there and looking for the working relationship with us and the Latter Day Saints here in, in Yuba City. Police Officer Memorial, attended that. Chief, again, kudos. Awesome job. I like the military pomp and circumstance, and you guys did a good job, so thank you. Very honoring to the, to the fallen officers. Citizens Academy, attended that. Great to see the enthusiasm. This place was packed. Yuba Sutter Transit, attended it. Pretty much business as usual. They're walking through their budget, reevaluating routes. Like everyone else, the biggest concern they have is a rising fuel cost, and that's their, their biggest concern. And increased ridership, do know that it was put forth, and I believe it starts next spring. There will be a dedicated bus route from Sam's Club to the Sutter County Yuba College Campus, which is much needed, and so that's going to be going on for a trial basis, and I believe, Mr. Cardoza, you correct me, it starts next January. Yeah. Oh, it starts this fall?
Yes, semester, yes.
Oh, okay, so it starts in the fall. I was thinking it started in January, but it's coming up. Students that need that, make sure that they use that. And then on Sunday evening, I was able to attend the Freedom Heroes War of, War on Terror, Terror Memorial out at Calvary. Awesome, awesome service, moving moment. If you have the chance, get out there, check it out. You know, it's, it's not the Vietnam Memorial in DC, but it's still quite moving to stand there and realize there are 6,545 people that have laid down their lives so that we can have the freedoms and the liberties that we have just since the year 2000. And so upcoming events this weekend are open, so go check that out. And with that, looking forward to getting things done. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Vice Mayor Cardoza.
All righty. We haven't had a meeting for a little over a month, so I attended a little over 30 community events, and I'm not going to go into 30 and I'm not going to go into 30 community events. I just want to thank all the folks that invited me. I appreciate it, and it's wonderful meeting people in our community and sharing great memories. I was going to highlight on five of them. And our council members already called me, but our Yuba City Citizens Graduation, that was a great time. I attended the canine trials. If you want to see our police dogs in action, it's a great thing. I mean, they had them go through the cars, find the drugs or whatevers in the vehicles. They had a time limit, and the dog would go through the car within minutes. And then they did testing trials and everything, and it was a great time. Then Saturday, we went to the fairgrounds. I helped the police department do a fundraiser. Ended up doing 10 miles and 10 flights of stairs, helping them out. Attended the fire department's rib feed, went to the temple also. And then I attended the Crystal Awards, where the church students picked out a teacher from each school in our district. That was a great time. And then also Police Officer Memorial, and I'm just going to make it short and sweet. Thank you very much.
There's a lot of stuff. Triage it out of here. Sticking primarily to my committees, SACOG, we are part of the, their programs called Green Means Go and a civic lab, primarily focusing on our Bridge Street corridor, when they're eventually going to expand that out to two lanes east direction, a four-lane roadway. So they, that's on their project. The idea is to spur economic development, whether it be bicycles or pedestrians or residential, some mixed use projects in there. Hopefully, once we get that done, we can expand that out and grow from there. We did, I had a site visit from James Corliss, who's the executive director of SACOG. He came up. My days are running together either yesterday or the day before, and I got to give him a run around the city so he can put his eyeballs on everything and kind of have some visual relationship with the things we've been talking about. He was particularly interested in, of course, the Bridge Street corridor, the Fifth Street Bridge, and say they're funding a major portion of that. And then our bicycle master plan. We have some goals in mind for that, so that is definitely in the works. We're looking forward to some results and getting that on paper. The, see, cap-to-cap, I mentioned, we, two, three of us went to that. And I concur wholeheartedly with the evaluation of my two, my colleagues here. That is a very valuable time. I unfortunately was sick for about half the time with the, the meetings that I was assigned to. I was on the civic amenities team. I did go out a day and a half early, and we were, the focus on that, and kind of gratuitously, it was on hotels and the value that they bring to a community. I know we're working on trying to get some here to our community. And they were able to clarify some of the things, the many things that a hotel would bring, a meeting room, or assisting locals as far as family visits and people traveling and medical, and the list goes on and on. So we're looking forward to that. But I was able to network for some folks, from people from all over our region, to get some of ideas, what they're doing. We did have a tour, if you will, and a meeting at the Watergate Hotel. So that was also kind of a sideline, interesting history lesson as well, to stand in the room where G. Gordon Liddy was when he was monitoring the break-in of the hotel or the office building of the hotel. We went on a tour of Kentland Subdivision, which is very unique. I would look that up if you have the time. Kentlands, which is in Maryland, a master planned community back in the 80s, but you'd never know, it looks like was built in the 1780s. They did such a really nice job. They've had 30 years for all the landscaping to mature, and it was just beautiful to see something like that. And there's no reason why we couldn't work on doing something like that here. That'd be really, really wonderful. Had the opportunity to go for a ride on a driverless vehicle. Looks like a cube, if you will, like a shuttle. But we're driving through town in National Harbor, Maryland, and there's no driver. So that was really interesting. There was a guy monitoring, of course, because it's still fairly new. But to see that, that's the same thing that they have. They got a program at Sac State, and they're doing that, moving students to and fro. And right now, it's ideal for closed environments. The one that came to mind regionally would be like, for example, Dell Webb's development down there in either, was it Rockland or Lincoln? Where it's closed and are already authorizing golf cart-type vehicles on there anyway. So if you program the machine to just stay in that one little area, it seems to be kind of an up-and-coming, very viable transportation option. Attended the emergency preparedness session in here for elected officials. Get us all schooled up on the most contemporary plans in place for emergency preparedness. Also attended the Chamber Breakfast regarding our state of homelessness. Received a good report, a very good report, thorough report from Kaya, who was here this evening. And always encouraged to see what progress they're making. The Subuca Sutter Buttes Flood Control Agency Finance Committee Meeting, several projects moving along. There's one up in Oroville they're working on, also the final five-ish miles there on the Feather River northeast of 99. And then we're moving on to projects on the east levee of the bypass. And that seems to be going right along Mike Bissette, is our new, the executive director, and he's doing an outstanding job. I too had the honor of attending the Peace Officers Memorial Ceremony. Again, very touching, very emotional, brings back some bad memories, but also some good ones. And so it's a very worthwhile and moving experience and ceremony, PA system or not. The intention was there, and it was, it was great. So and it obviously took a lot of planning, Rob, so thank you for all your folks and the coordination you obviously did with the other agencies. Going to give a plug for Very Special Arts. I'm on the board for Yuba Sutter Arts. Very Special Arts is in cooperation with the special education schools here in Yuba Sutter County. I went to the one, it's an annual event where they have a theme, and the special education students this year, it was circus. And so they did a lot of art projects related to circus. And then they displayed all their works like in a gallery setting, and then they had ribbons for second, third, and then everyone gets, else gets a participant. But to see the kids come in there and enjoy that, and we had other art projects. I Mandate Booth, where they got to color visors with fabric pens and stuff. Just that alone, just for two hours and just enjoy, enjoy kids enjoying themselves. And it was wonderful. So that was over in Yuba County at Wheatland's Bear River School in Wheatland. And then Friday, they need volunteers, so you're going to have to let me look at my phone here. If anybody's interested in taking an hour and a half out of your life, and believe me, it's worth it. Same thing as last year, Buett Vista School beginning at 8:30 in the morning, 8:30 to 10:30. All you do is you sit there, hey, I'm here to help. Look for me, I can point you in the right direction. Dave Reed and Abby, they, Sessina, they do a great job. You just sit in a booth and whatever art project you have, you're assigned to, you help them with that. Then when that closes down, if you want to stick around, and I encourage you to do so, they have songs and skits and plays and whatnot that they've been practicing for a long time with their teachers, and they put on a performance for themselves and the parents. So another one of those win-win things I referenced with the Youth Commission. It's just a great thing for our community. So I could go on and on and on. It's been a month or better since we've had a last meeting, but that sums it up. And I think we're at now, with that, we re-adjourn into closed session. All right. Thank you very much. You have anything, sir?
Nothing for me, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
All right. Diana? Nothing? All right. Thank you very much.